All right, folks, I think I'm gonna go ahead and get us started. It's 6:01 PM on the 9th of September. A little bit of feedback there. No worries. I'll give you a second. Echo? Got it. All right, thank you. I do want to mention for members of the public before we get started that, and those folks watching on screen, but mostly it's those that are in the audience. It's on? Never mind, false alarm. We closed captioning was not happening until now. Well done, Mary. Thank you very much. We've got it going. That's great. Okay, we'll go ahead and get our meeting started. If you will, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate that. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with a roll call. Ms. Trimble, I will let you know that Counselor Jones is not in attendance this evening, but if you'll go ahead and do roll call, please.
All right. One second, guys.
No worries.
Anderson.
Present.
Vassara.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Perlino.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Jones is absent. Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Savage.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
Vasika.
Counselor Vasika ran home to Quick Aaron. She is on her way back here momentarily, so she's not in the room now, but she will be here with us.
I will watch for her. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. Thanks, Ms. Trimble. We'll move on to item number two, approval of the minutes. We have minutes from July 29th and minutes from August 5th. Do any council members have any changes or questions to any of the minutes? No, not seeing any. Any online? Okay. Not seeing any changes to the minutes, then those will remain as stand. Thank you very much. Item number three is our committee meeting agenda or announcing any committee meeting changes. Looks like we have just a couple of committees this week. Ms. Trimble, do you have any changes to the committee schedule for September 11th?
No changes that I know of.
Okay. We have Public Works and Mobility Committee starting at 1:30 PM, which has got a lengthier agenda there. And then we've got the Housing, Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee starting at 3:10. Both have several agenda items for members of the public. This is located on the City of Missoula's city council meeting schedule, and there's a calendar there. You can click on the agenda item to see what committee schedule and accompanying agenda items are with that. Okay, now we'll go ahead and move on to the special presentations and proclamations. We don't have any neighborhood council updates this evening. We do have a couple of proclamations, and so I'll go ahead and read those now. The first proclamation is National Recovery Month. Here we go. Whereas substance use disorder is a chronic health issue, not unlike other chronic health issues such as diabetes and cancer, and whereas approximately 13,000 Missoula residents have struggled or are struggling with substance use, and nearly 10,000 of those have sought or are engaged in recovery support. And whereas recovery from substance use and/or mental health is not only possible, it is an essential part of overall health and wellness. And whereas stigma and stereotypes surrounding substance use disorder often deter people from seeking treatment. And whereas public education, awareness and open discussion can promote recovery from substance use disorders and more effective treatments of substance use disorders. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the month of September 2024 as National Recovery Month. Is anybody here in the audience wishing to speak to this proclamation this evening? Come on up. Thank you. There we go. Sorry about that, Shannon. Thank you.
My name is Shannon Sprol. I wasn't actually expecting to speak. I just came to hear the proclamation, but I wanted to thank you and the city council for the proclamation. We have a very active recovery community in Missoula and the county, and during this month, National Recovery Month, we have a number of organizations who have gathered together to put on a number of events and activities throughout the month. And I just want to express support for you guys and appreciate the support you have for the recovery community.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the work that you do to help support the recovery community as well. Thank you. All right. Any questions for Ms. Sprol before she sits down? Great, thank you so much. All right, I'll go ahead then and move on to our next proclamation, which is Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas Montana's suicide rate is the second highest in the nation and has ranked among the top five states with the highest rates of suicide for the past four decades. And whereas suicide is a community-wide problem requiring a community effort, and since 2018, Missoula County has lost 157 Missoulians to suicide. And whereas suicide by firearm accounts for 54% of all suicides in the U.S. and 63% of all suicides in Montana and Missoula. And guns stored in the home are used for suicide 40 times more often than for self-defense. And whereas it is important to support our new National Suicide Prevention Lifeline 988 Call Center here in Missoula along with our new mobile response units who can effectively and empathetically intervene in crisis situations. And whereas our community will support suicide prevention efforts to the maximum extent possible with initiatives like Project Tomorrow Montana, which works to reduce Missoula County's suicide deaths and attempts through educational programs and evidence-based policy. Now, therefore, in coordination with the National Suicide Prevention Week, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, do hereby recognize the week of September 9th through the 15th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week. Susan Hay Patrick, who is the Chief Executive Officer of United Way of Missoula County, would normally have been with us tonight. She is with the convening here called Invest Health, which is a 50-city organization across the United States looking to improve a whole number of community development-related issues related to public health. And she did ask me to read this letter in support of this proclamation. Dear Mayor Davis, thank you for recognizing Suicide Prevention Week. Since 2014, the Project Tomorrow Montana Network, led by the United Way and Missoula Public Health, has focused on preventing suicide and building a resilient community. Despite the concerning numbers in the proclamation, we are making progress. Suicides in Missoula are down over the past three years with a consistent downward trend year over year. This is hopeful news. In the past 18 months alone, we've trained more than 500 people in how to reach out to their family members, friends and colleagues at risk of suicide. And we've distributed more than 1,000 free gun locks. The growing number of calls to the local 988 Crisis Lifeline shows that Missoulians want help. 988 training, gun locks, and the Riverwalk Crisis Receiving Center and the mobile support team all play a role in saving lives, strengthening Missoula and ensuring that everybody has access to the care and connection they need during the most painful moments. More information is available at projecttomorrowmt.org. Read that again. Spelled out, projecttomorrowmt.org. Thank you again for this proclamation. Sincerely, Susan Hay Patrick. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that's here to speak in regards to this proclamation this evening? So I want to make sure you have the opportunity. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we have on our agenda this evening, we have a public hearing for the Wild Root Phased subdivision. And then, under New Business, we have two items. And so, don't know if you saw this on your agenda that's printed out. 6.1 is the Caris River Access Construction Manager at Risk Contract Amendment. And 6.2 was added under New Business because of a clerical error, and it has to do with the rezone of 2139 South 7th Street West. So from last Friday, when this first got published, just wanted to make sure I brought that to people's attention. It keeps in order with the public hearing timeline set forth in the recommended motion. So there will not be a vote on this tonight, but it does go ahead and sets the public hearing schedule in place. Then we do have a regular business item under Climate Conservation and Parks Committee. And that concludes major... Oh, excuse me. We do have an old business item, and this happens to be the approving the resolution, levying taxes on lots, pieces of parcel and land for the Business Improvement District. As you'll recall, the formula is relatively complex. The staff did not have the numbers from the Department of Revenue in time for our August 19th budget hearing. This is something that does not require council to increase taxes. It's basically the Business Improvement District setting fees for themselves, but you do approve the recommended motion and their tax assessment, the district tax assessment. So that is under Old Business this evening. Excuse me, rather than... Well, it's under 9.3. Business arising from previous meetings. Right after committee reports. Okay. We'll now move on then to public hearings. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing on the item. A member of council makes a motion and a vote is taken. The public hearing and vote take place on the same night, unless there is a reason to hold the vote over to a later meeting date. And so with that, we will move on to item 5.1, which is the Wild Root Phased Subdivision Annexation and Rezoning. And we have Tara Porcari here for the staff to present on this project.
Okay. Awesome. Get this moved over. Okay, so Tara Porcari, I'm a planner with Development Services. As Mayor Davis mentioned, we'll be talking about the Wild Root Phase subdivision and rezon today. Cushing Terrill has submitted this development application on behalf of their client developer, Pando Holdings. And the property owners are Hillview Road LLC and Hillview Multifamily Project Owner LLC. When all is said and done, the subdivision is proposed to have 248 lots and an associated 450 dwelling units added to the community. And if council remembers, this one came to our land use planning committee two weeks ago. So hopefully everyone has had a little bit of time to look over these materials and kind of get re-familiarized since then, since it has been two weeks. So, starting off, here the item city council will be making decisions on at tonight's meeting. We've got an annexation petition for just a portion of the property, rezon application, six variance requests from a few of the subdivision regulations, and obviously a full phase subdivision preliminary plat application. This is the location of the subject property. It's located in the Moose Can Gully neighborhood with the actual Moose Can Gully located near the southwest corner of the property. And then you can see it's founded on the west property line by Hillview Way. There's residential development generally to the west and mostly residentially zoned vacant land to the east. To the north, there's some residential, but mostly residentially zoned vacant land at this time and an existing religious assembly use to the south, along with a little bit of residential. There's a multifamily development already going in on the southwest corner that's approved under the existing zoning. Just if anyone's been up in the South Hills lately and has noticed that construction underway, then just one more thing to point out here is that the majority of the property is currently located within Missoula city limits, but there are five smaller parcels in the southeast of the subject property that are currently located in the county. So as we all know, South Hills are exactly the easiest area for development just given all the steep slopes in the area. So since there are slopes greater than 15% throughout the site, the subdivider was required to submit a hillside density adjustment worksheet with their application. And that uses the allowed zoning densities as well as slope percentages in the different categories to calculate an adjusted density given the intense slope so that the density will just be a little bit lower given the intense sloping in the area. So that being said, their proposed development, including 450 units, is well within the adjusted density calculation for the site, which could have allowed up to 755 units. You'll also notice that there are existing slopes greater than 25%, which are noted here in red, but are also identified on the preliminary plat that shows proposed grades as no built zones. So not able to develop there. A key takeaway I also just want to point out is that the roadways and lots, as well as parkland and common areas, have been designed to work around steep slopes and limit earthwork to the greatest extent possible. And that being said, the proposed grades are designed to meet subdivision standards for contiguous buildable lot area. And quite a few conditions are in place to just ensure all the street and sidewalk improvements are designed in accordance with our city standards from both engineering and the subdivision regulations. So here's a summary of the proposed preliminary plat. It's a large subdivision, and obviously, therefore, it's a little bit hard to see all the details on the screen. So hopefully you've all had a chance to review the zoomed-in versions that are included with the project packet. On a high level, we've got one multifamily lot just north of Rymel Road on the southwest of the property. Like I mentioned, this part of the development already has approved permits and is under construction as we speak. Then there are 21 townhome lots just north of the multifamily development, still adjacent to Hillview Road on the west side of the property. That will be a part of the second phase of the development. And then we have 226 single-family lots, all scattered heading east across the property, making up that grand total of 248 lots. The main access will be from Hillview Way at Rymel Road, and then also at what's, at least for the time being, labeled Local A. Sewer and water to all lots will be with city utility connections, and stormwater is to be contained on-site. Then here's the proposed phasing plan with seven total phases. Phase one has already begun with some of the multifamily development and is slotted to have final plat by the end of 2026. Then the final phase, seven, is planned to be completed by the end of 2044. So assuming all goes well, the full subdivision build-out will be complete in 20 years. Each phase includes full roadway improvements, complete easements, any dedicated parkland mentioned, common area improvements, and other associated stormwater and utility infrastructure. All conditions of approval are also, of course, required prior to the timelines stated in the staff report, many of which are obviously tied to a specific phase of the development. So for example, some of the transportation improvements for Hillview Way include an increase in right-of-way on the east side of the street, new dedicated turn lanes, new crosswalks, and adjustment of the right-of-way at Hillview Way and Rymel Road for the future installation of Roundabout. One of the conditions of approval also requires that the subdivider complete the engineering design for the Roundabout prior to Phase Two, not the installation, just the design. Rymel Road will be the onsite collector coming in east to west through the south portion of the subdivision. And Local Streets A through I have been included in the design to adequately tie into all the lots. They're all proposed to be constructed up to city engineering and subdivision standards with boulevard, sidewalk, curb and gutter, except where variances are requested. And then, non-motorized transportation options are also proposed throughout the subdivision in the form of sidewalks and trail connections. And additional bike infrastructure is proposed to also be placed in the form of either dedicated bike lanes or a shared-use path along our collector streets. At this time, there are no new proposed bus stops as both Mountain Line Route 12 and school buses pick up within a half-mile of the subdivision. School bus pickup and drop-off is currently located just across Hillview Way from the proposed subdivision at Clearview Way and Hillview Way. And Development Services has not received comments from school representatives regarding bus service at this time. Want to emphasize that "at this time." So additionally, as more school-aged children begin moving into the subdivision, bus routes may obviously change, most likely will change. So although we expect new bus stops to most likely be added in the future, staff don't recommend that the subdivider be required to construct any formal bus stops at this time. So as was shown in the last slide, the five parcels in the southeast corner of the lot are still located within the county. Actually, I think that was like two or three slides ago. But the subdivider has petitioned that they be annexed as a part of this property and zoned upon annexation to our 5.4 residential, which is generally a single-family zone and comparable to the existing county R residential zoning. The five parcels to be annexed are within the utility services area boundary and are located within Annexation Area A, which are mapped areas in the annexation policy that generally meet the review criteria for annexation. The five properties are also surrounded on three sides by city property, so it both continues growth in a logical pattern and fills a gap in the boundaries of city limits. Basically, this annexation meets our annexation policy guidelines pretty much to a T. So I'll definitely keep this portion fairly brief and just say that staff is supporting the annexation as well as the zoning upon annexation to city R 5.4 residential zoning. That recommended approval is, of course, with the conditions of approval listed in the staff report, and those will go through here in just a little bit because they're the same for subdivision approval. Okay, so moving on, here's the existing zoning. The west portion of the property is mostly zoned RM 1-35 and RM 0.5, both residential multifamily zones with a small portion of B 2-1 community business and an overlay across the entire portion of property called out as the Hillview Heights overlay. Then the west portion of the property is zoned R 8 residential, which is a low-density residential zone. And as mentioned, the county R property seen on the southwest corner here is recommended to be city R 5.4 residential upon annexation. Here are the future land use designations set out in our Missoula 2035 City Growth Policy. We have residential high density on the western portion of the property, and then residential medium going into lower density as we move further east from Hillview Way. The box on the right here shows what the relatable zoning districts are as laid out in the growth policy. Residential high calls for RM 1, RM 1.5, or RM 0.5, and residential medium calls for RT 10, R 8, R 5.4, or RT 5.4. Then in bold, there I'm showing that RM 1, RM 0.5, and R 5.4 are the zoning designations being requested by the applicant as part of the rezoning. So they are requesting relatable zoning districts from the growth policy. Here's how they're showing that geographically, similar to what's shown in the growth policy. Out of those three zoning designations, we have the highest-density zoning right up against Hillview Way, and then we get to the west-end single-family lots as we get to the eastern portion of the site. You can also see that the rezoning will ensure zoning designations align with the shapes of the new lot lines, so that will just help us prevent any split zoning on the proposed new lots. Then you'll also see that it removes the entirety of the Hillview Heights overlay, which honestly doesn't make that much of a difference for the subject property outside of generally just simplifying the zoning. For the most part, that overlay was intended for land associated with the Hillview Heights PUD located west of Hillview Way. And that was all prior to the establishment of Hillview Way in general. So all the removal will really technically impact for this development is the removal of a 9.9 units-per-acre density cap, which, given the existing proposal, doesn't actually limit anything seeing that the proposed maximum density sits at about 8.66 units per acre. So basically what that does, it just removes a long history of kind of a quirky overlay, and it simplifies the zoning regulations for both future staff as well as any property owners that are trying to come in and develop their sites. So I've tried to simplify the rezoning a little bit since we have a lot of different zoning districts at play here and a lot of different kind of weird shapes. So in doing so, I've tried to show the new boundaries of each proposed designation overlaid onto the existing zoning just for comparison's sake. So starting with the section proposed to all be RM 0.5, it currently also includes some RM 1-35 zoning as well as the Hillview Heights overlay. I also just want to quick point out that we're not seeing a super wild difference in the requested zoning versus what exists already since generally it's mostly the higher-density RM 1-35 and RM 0.5 on the west of the property. And then county R and city R A, both generally single-family zones, and those will all be R 5.4, which is also still a single-family zone. I just feel like that's a little bit helpful since it all looks like a lot and it's pretty confusing with all the new lot lines. So hopefully that's a little bit helpful for everyone. And then here's a basic comparison of the two zoning districts for that northwest portion of the property on the last slide. You'll see the differences on the screen in red. RM 0.5 has slightly higher allowable density, requiring just 500 square feet per unit versus 1,000 square feet with RM 1-35, slightly smaller rear setbacks going from 20 feet to just 10 feet, and then a higher maximum height for the buildings of up to 125 feet, which it'd be very surprising if we ended up seeing that on this site given that this area is proposed for townhomes and single-family homes. But still worth noting. So next, we're looking at the area to be rezoned to RM 1-35. Most of this area is currently already RM 1-35, which is why we're already seeing some of those multifamily buildings being approved since they're already allowed here. However, there is also a small portion of B 2-1 community business, and again, the Hillview Heights overlay here as well, which would be removed as a part of the rezoning. Again, this won't impact too much since it's already mostly RM 1-35, but technically that small portion of B 2-1 land could have a slightly different maximum height and would allow for slightly different uses. But again, only residential development is proposed for the site now and once it's going to be rezoned. Then the last portion to be rezoned, currently mostly R 8 and zoned upon annexation, R 5.4 residential. It is all proposed to be zoned as R 5.4 for the single-family lots. So single-family to single-family and just slightly higher density than the R 8. And we can see here that the only thing that changes between R 8 and R 5.4 is a slightly larger maximum density for R 5.4, requiring just 5,400 square feet per unit instead of 8,000 square feet per unit. Then if you haven't had a chance to fully review the staff report prior to tonight's meeting, definitely, please read through that section. But here's the full language discussing what we look for regarding rezoning approvals. And just to keep this brief, due to the guidance in the growth policy and the associated future land use recommendations, staff does believe that these criteria are met and therefore supports the proposed rezoning, recommending approval of that portion. Okay, so next we're looking at the subdivision review criteria, which are grouped for the growth policy and zoning, agriculture and ag-water user facilities, local services, natural environment considerations, and public health and safety. So we'll dive into this. First, currently, as mentioned, there are not any active agricultural users on the subject property. The application packet says that the site was most likely historically used for pasture grazing, but based on historic aerial imagery, there's no sign of that for at least the past 40 years. Almost the entire property does contain soil types that the NRCS Soil Survey identifies as farmland of local importance, but not prime farmland. However, it's also important to note there that our subdivision regulations However, it's also important to note there that our subdivision regulations state that mitigation of adverse impacts will not be based on a loss of agricultural soils. Additionally, neither the city or county includes direction or land use plans calling for agricultural production on this property. The property doesn't have any water rights or other water conveyances used for agriculture, agricultural irrigation purposes. And so due to these findings, there shouldn't be any major unseen impacts to ag or ag water facilities. Then local services, water and sewer will all be city utilities and the subdivider is responsible for the connections as a part of each phase. Solid waste will be covered by Republic Services for the area and city police and fire will cover fire and law enforcement with fire hydrants being installed with each phase. Impacts to schools, it's estimated in the application that there could be a maximum of up to 135 new school age children added with the subdivision with those children currently going to Russell Elementary, Washington Middle School, and Sentinel High School. And as of today, the school district hasn't made any comment on any adverse impacts on the school. So we don't have any comment from them at this time. Parks and Recreation, we'll have two new parks being dedicated to the city as mentioned before on the preliminary plat. And we'll look a little bit further into the design of those here. So the first area of dedicated parkland is immediately adjacent to Moose Can Gully and will also act as a buffer between the associated riparian area and the multifamily development to the north. It includes a 10-foot wide trail easement for an eight-foot trail, a six-foot wide trail, and connections to a number of two-foot wide, single track trails and sidewalks nearby. This will be dedicated to the city and Parks and Recreation would take on maintenance responsibilities. And based on the recommended conditions, plans for dedicated parkland would still be subject to review and approval by Parks and Rec and would be required prior to final plat approval for each associated phase. Then here's the second portion of dedicated parkland just east of the first one. The 10-foot wide trail easement continues all the way over to the last portion of Rymel Road within the subdivision. And then it also includes some two-foot wide trails helping to ensure a complete and well-connected pedestrian network throughout the entirety of the south portion of the subdivision. Continuing with local services. Again, as mentioned earlier when we were looking at the plat, the proposal includes updates to Hillview Way and plans for the buildout of Rymel Road as the main onsite collector in addition to the local streets A through I, which will all obviously be designed in compliance with engineering and subdivision standards. Additionally, sidewalks and single track trail connections as well as mid-block pedestrian easements are included throughout the entire site in addition to the inclusion of Moose Can Gully Trail in the south portion of the property. Bicycle infrastructure is also included along all the collector streets and no new bus stops are proposed. Again, at least at this time, given there are some existing mountain lion and school bus stops less than a half mile away from the property. Then one last thing to point out for transportation is that City Council created a special improvement district in 2015 to upgrade Hillview Way. Improvements made under that SID 549 were financed in part through the issuance of bonds, which are repaid over time via special tax assessments and impact fees by the owners of properties that benefit from the improvements. So since the area benefit for this SID includes proportions of the subject property already within city limits, but will also benefit those parcels currently under county jurisdiction, staff has included a recommended condition to require that all wild root lot owners also pay impact fees as described in the Hillview Way SID 549 agreement. So we'll get that condition language in a bit. Moving on to criteria for natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat. The property is located in floodplain zone X shaded, which is a 0.2% annual chance or area of minimal flood hazard. These are areas that are low risk, so they aren't considered a regulatory floodplain area and we shouldn't see any major concern there. The application has included a riparian resource management plan, which designates the area surrounding the gully, a riparian area. Mentioned that before. It does also note, however, that there aren't any activities proposed there and that the park will again act as an added buffer from development areas, particularly that multifamily development to the north. The application also includes a weed management plan and a landscaping plan for review by Parks and Rec. Additionally, many conversations have happened throughout the preliminary review periods and conditions have been added to ensure that. Landscaping and tree.
Ms. Burkari, your screen and your voice are freezing just a little bit. So if you feel like you need to turn your camera off just for a second, that would be fine, but let's make sure we kind of back up a little bit to the riparian resource management plan, possibly. Does that sound right? I'm looking to Cher Nugent, does that seem about right? Okay. Every now and again, this happens where our system freezes. Let's see. And Ms. Burkari, it looks like you might be frozen there. Mary, anything on your side?
Apologies. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know why I just got kicked off. Was I just at the beginning of this slide, the last you heard from me?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and just start over from the beginning? I think that's a good idea. Thank you so much.
Okay, of this, of this slide, correct?
Yes, yeah, the natural environment, wildlife and habitat. Thank you.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. Apologies there. So let's see, we said that it's located in floodplain zone X. So we don't have any major concerns there. That's 0.2% annual chance. So that's not regulatory and we don't have any major concerns. Obviously, the gully is a riparian area, so we have required a riparian resource management plan. So we've got all of that in the packet. The application also includes a weed management plan and a landscaping plan for review by Parks and Rec. Additionally, many conversations have also happened just to ensure that there are conditions in place. So landscaping and trees are appropriately installed throughout the subdivision. So next, the property does contain wildlife habitat. And according to the application packet, animals that may use the site include, but are not limited to Hungarian partridge, moose, fox, coyote raccoon, bald eagles, ospreys, black and grizzly bears, mountain lion, and both mule and whitetail deer. We've received comments from Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks, their regional supervisor, Randy Arnold, and as recommended by his email, we've included a condition of approval requiring living with wildlife covenants for the subdivision, which is pretty common in Missoula, especially up in the south hills. We've also received comments from Five Valleys Audubon, Missoula Valley Water Quality District, and Missoula Public Health and Air Quality, none of which had any major concerns or opposition to the proposed subdivision. Five Valleys Audubon did include that bird species may inhabit the area, but they also commented that the property was at one time a valued grassland. And it looks like I just lost my screen share. There we go. But for the most part, the value of that habitat has generally diminished over time along with a lot of its bird use. So they also weren't especially concerned about potential impacts. So lastly, there's two residential structures existing on the site. Damon Murdo of the State Historic Preservation Office commented to us that the structures aren't of significant historic value. So we didn't have to require cultural resources inventory at this time. Finally, public health and safety is the last major subdivision review criteria. As noted, a hillside density worksheet was included with the application for adjusted density maximums on our steep slopes and no build zones for slopes greater than 25% have been identified on the preliminary plat. All storm waters to be contained onsite, captured in a series of inlets and transmitted via underground storm drains to one of three detention systems. Two of the detention systems are proposed to be lined ponds that will prevent infiltration of storm water. Storm water would then be discharged from these ponds at pre-development rates to Moose Can Gully just downstream of the development. And then the third stormwater management system is proposed to be an underground sealed detention system that would discharge at pre-development rates to the storm drain system in Hillview Road just north of the site. The subject property is located within the wildland urban interface and is in an area considered to have moderate wildfire risk. The city subdivision regulations require appropriate language to be included in the covenants when land is located in these areas, which staff have included a condition of approval for. The proposed property is also located within an air stagnation zone. Therefore, the development covenants include language requiring all lot owners to abide by the wood stove, paving, and outdoor burning rules provided by the city county health department. And then we've already discussed these final points, but they'll be connecting to city sewer and water, be required to install fire hydrants, and obviously there are ingress and egress points provided for all of our residents to safely access those new lots. Okay, so moving on to our variance section. Here are the general criteria set out in the subdivision regulations. We look at if the conditions requiring the variance are unique to the property, if physical surroundings would cause undue hardship if the regulations were strictly enforced, whether the hardship has been created by the applicant or not, and that granting a variance wouldn't result in a threat to public safety, cause an increase in public costs, or violate zoning ordinances or growth policy regulations. Okay, variance one. First variance is for a section in the subdivision regs that prohibit dead end streets and the applicant has requested that Local I, which is located at the southeast corner of the subdivision, just coming off Rymel Road there, could be installed as a hammerhead turnaround. Their reasoning for this is that it allows for Rymel Road to connect to an existing public highway easement, which was requested by our engineering department, working with steep slopes on the site and maximizing the number of lots that can be accessed, so more housing. This preliminary layout has been cleared with our engineering staff, allows Rymel Road to maintain an appropriate collector street profile, ensures that all lots are accessed from a public or private road, which is in our subdivision regulations as well. And it meets the limiting depth of 150 feet for streets from fire code, which is adequate for emergency services and turnaround distances. So our fire folks have taken a look at this and signed off that that's still safe. You'll also notice that the lower lots 184 through 186 are technically designed as through lots, but due to the topography of the site and necessity to connect Rymel Road into that existing easement in yellow, Walter Banzinger was able to sign off for planning that the design was acceptable, which is allowed in the subdivision regulations without a variance. We can just do that administratively. So that's included in the packet as well, his email. Additionally, while the subdivider included a no access strip along Rymel in one of their exhibits, so that was the plan, staff has also added an extra recommended condition of approval just to require that there's a one-foot no access strip for all the lots along Rymel, which is a collector, just to ensure that all the lots are accessed off local roads rather than that busier Rymel Road, which is also required in the subdivision regulations. Okay, next ones, variances two through four. We have three variances that are all for the same standard. The subdivision regulations state that block lengths may not exceed a maximum of 480 feet and the subdivider is requesting that block lengths be exceeded at a number of location. For simplicity's sake, we've grouped these in three different groups. I showed these here color coded, so it's a little bit easier to kind of understand and get eyes on that. Overall, these variances are requested given the steep slopes onsite and the challenges just associated with achieving required standards, particularly required grades for the buildouts of all the rights aways. As shown in blue on the maps, that light blue there, they have included mid-block crossings wherever possible using pedestrian access easements where they're proposing two-foot, single track trails just to increase that internal connectivity and really meet the intent of those shorter block lengths. So remains the good pedestrian connectivity. And then the longest length without mitigation is over at Local B. So that's an orange there on the right side of the screen, which measures 550 feet. So not too much above 480 feet, but for the most part, that's the only internal local street that doesn't show a mitigation measure in the form of those pedestrian easements. Then we have a variance request for the subdivision standard that requires sidewalks on both sides of Rymel Road. The request is that for 450 feet, there would only be sidewalk on the north side. I'll also point out that on this image, the sidewalk is actually missing all the way up to where Rymel meets Local A. So not just the blue rectangle shown, it's a little bit further up on that road. You can kind of see that here a little bit better. This image shows that in order to try and mitigate for the lack of sidewalk on the south, they have included a two-foot wide trail proposed that connects into the wider trail easement and still provides at least a pedestrian option along the south side next to the park all the way up to Local A. But there will be a full connection all the way on the north side connected with, say, crossings. So the reason for this variance again has to do with Rymel Road and its layout, which was impacted by steep slopes as everything was up here. It also is requested because the south side of Rymel Road includes a 20-foot cut slope and by providing 12 feet for the required sidewalk and boulevard, it would definitely compromise the provision of the Moose Can Gully Trail, which is a major priority and has long been discussed with our Parks and Rec departments. We definitely want to see that connection there at the south side. And then finally, variance request number six. The last one is for provision in the subdivision regulations that requires each lot to abut a public or private street or road. And the request is that lots 18 through 22, shown outline in red, would be allowed to not abut a public or private street and instead be accessed by public access easements in the form of kind of a wide alley there. At the Land Use and Planning Committee, the question was posed by council as to why this requirement even exists in the subdivision regulations. And after some conversations with staff who were around back in the early 2000s, which is not me, it was pretty much what staff had guessed at the LUP meeting. And that's in essence that it helps with lot and block development and connectivity. And that basically without it, subdivisions could possibly create kind of weird driveway developments, like, you know, kind of some of the areas north of River Road. And it would have the opportunity to not provide adequate fire access due to parking and turnaround space. That being said, this has been a longstanding subdivision regulation for the state as well. And we're just more and more lately seeing better planning that's still able to meet the intent of this regulation without sacrificing the connectivity or the safety piece, making sure that fire can still access the lots in the same way. Like everything in the subdivision, the variance is requested due to steep slopes since Local A had to be designed to fit the hillside and meet great requirements. Local A also does a pretty good job of not adding additional earthwork up there, which we like to see. It's also meeting the requirement that townhome units face the public realm, shown here as Local A or Common Area in Hillview Way. Both engineering and fire have looked at these preliminary plans and the impacts are proposed to be mitigated by alley access via 32-foot access easement for vehicular traffic, which comes to the back of all these lots, and then eight-foot access easements for pedestrian travel leading to the fronts of the townhomes in red. Overall, staff thinks the connectivity at two points onto Local A looks all right. And I'll also point out that all the townhomes will actually be accessed via the alley and garages at the back of the lots. However, variances are only required for these five lots in red since the rest of the lots technically have frontages on Local A. So they're all basically designed the same way. It's more of just making sure that engineering and fire are comfortable. It's more of just making sure that engineering and fire are comfortable with the appropriate turnarounds and level of access. So the staff has included in the original staff report a total of 48 recommended conditions of approval, but I've just outlined a few here, just that are a little bit different from some of our more standard conditions, since we do have a lot of standard conditions for our subdivisions. Here we've got a condition to require the design of the roundabout at Hillview and Rymel Road, a condition requiring a maintenance agreement for the Hammerhead turnaround at Local I, since it's a private road, and then the dedication of 10 feet of additional right-of-way along Hillview Way, so the east side is a full 40 feet from center line rather than the existing 30. Next, no need to read this whole slide, but this is regarding the inclusion in the improvement district we discussed for Hillview Way, SID 549, and it requires that language appear on the face of the final plat, just to ensure that impact fees are paid by all Wildroot law owners, so that can go into the special district. Just a couple more to point out here. We have a super important one that requires development agreement with Parks and Rec for parkland improvements and timing. And then finally, this is pretty standard, but there is a large amount of common area in the subdivision, so I thought it was worth pointing out that the language has been required in the development covenants that common area maintenance be performed by the homeowners association, not Parks and Rec. Okay, I went over all the public comment we received in full at the Land Use and Planning Committee meeting two weeks ago. Haven't really gotten anything since then, maybe one, two, that are all included in the packets, but I'll briefly just remind folks of a few of the people who have taken the time to comment. First, we have the pastor from Missoula Alliance Church, just south of the subdivision, just generally kind of mentioning his support. Next, we have Mary Wozniak, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right, sorry if I'm not, who says she lives on Main View Drive facing the development. Please read her letter in the project packet, but these were her concerns that I did outline in our last meeting. Since these comments came in, she also emailed some recordings of the construction noise from her property to our office, so those have been forwarded to all of our city council members in your email for reference. It's an MP4 file, so it wasn't as easy to upload. Then we went through this comment in full at council's LUP committee, but I'll readdress this one just in a little bit more detail for context for any folks that weren't able to attend. The Rymel family, neighbors to the south of the subject property, they outlined concerns of increased traffic along Rymel Road to the east of the subdivision. There were multiple emails and a letter from the Rymel family's attorney attached to the packet, and multiple members of the family and their attorney commented about that at planning board and LUP. The image on the screen was included as a part of their comments, with the main concern being maintenance along the portion of Rymel Road between the subdivision and Heaven's Gate, and just kind of impacts on that. So from my correspondence with county staff, I've been informed that Rymel Road going east from the subdivision out to Whittaker Drive is all public right-of-way. That being said, based on emails included in the application packet, my understanding is that Missoula County maintains the portion east of Heaven's Gate, but the portion between the subdivision, Heaven's Gate, is currently being privately maintained by the Rymel family. That's also shown in the image provided by the Rymels attorney in their letter of public comment, and you can see that their driveway meets up with Rymel Road right at the southeast corner of the subdivision, where kind of the little road here comes on up and meets that corner that's shown in blue. The county engineering office let our staff know that Missoula County hasn't ever formally accepted the portion of Rymel Road shown in green for maintenance. They also mentioned that for existing roads in a public easement, the county assumes maintenance for roadways only as long as they meet current road construction standards, which this portion of roadway does not at this time, so hence the maintenance by the Rymel family. The TIS was performed using Hillview Way as the only main access point, and only references the access at Rymel on the east as an emergency access point, and that's definitely remained acceptable to city engineering, as they still believe that the majority of the traffic will be accessing the subdivision through Hillview Way. That being said, prior to the Land Use and Planning Meeting two weeks ago, after the planning board meeting, I met with multiple of our city departments, including engineering and fire, to see what options we might have, just for mitigation of these impacts, and therefore, we're recommending a condition of approval for the developer to restrict access from the subdivision east onto Rymel Road, as well as mitigate any impacts the construction of the roadway in the southeast of the subdivision may have to the driveway approach and cattle guard for the Rymel property. After speaking to the applicant, it sounds like they're amenable to that conditioning. They mentioned it at LUP as well, and the Rymel family and their attorney have been made aware of this change to the project, and we kind of did a little bit of back-and-forth at LUP with them as well. Then to summarize the planning board meeting again, but with a little bit less detail than LUP, planning board itself didn't actually include too much additional discussion, mostly beyond the Rymel Road issues that I just brought up. That was the majority of the conversation that day. There were a few public comments outside of Whitney Rymel, from Megan Schreger, Colin Rymel, and Derek Peacock, shown here on the slide. Hope I said those right. At the end of the day, planning board made recommendations for eight of the nine motions presented tonight, since they do not make recommendations on annexations, but they unanimously recommended approval for the rezone, six variances, and the preliminary plat approval. And the summary of that meeting is also in the packet. So between planning board and LUP committee, we've kind of already gone over, we've added a few recommended conditions of approval, bringing the total count up to 50, and these two new ones are outlined in a bit more detail in memo one, which is part of your project packet as well. The first new condition is to respond to concerns expressed from the Rymel family about roadway maintenance and the location of the driveway and cattle guard. It says that prior to approval of Phase Three, which is the phase covering the southeast portion of the subdivision, that the subdivider will install a barricade to limit vehicular access to Rymel Road to the east until future connections may be determined necessary. It also requires that the subdivider mitigate any impacts to the driveway approach for the Rymels. I want to note on this that it's all subject to review and approval by Public Works, so they'll ensure that the proper barricade is in place to still allow for emergency access. And then I should also point out that the closure will not necessarily be for perpetuity, but rather until future development, road updates, or other happenings necessitate its removal, as said by Public Works staff. And then as written, the subdivider would be responsible for any cost grading or installation related to the driveway access needing updating to the south due to any construction associated with Wildroot. And then I also just want to remind the city council, for anyone that wasn't there, Jeremy Keen, Public Works Director, commented on this condition at LUP as well, and mentioned that there really wouldn't be a case where the Rymel family would just have to pay for new roadway improvements out of the blue, and it would most likely happen when either there's development to the north, which would be paid for by that development, or if the Rymel family were, for some reason, to request annexation, which, given that their land is in trust, is unlikely. So finally, last but not least, we mentioned this earlier, but condition number 50 was added just to ensure that through lots and other lots with two frontages would not be accessed from Rymel Road, but rather from the local streets they run on, and that all no-access strips are appropriately noted on the final plat. That's how it was designed, but we just have the language there to formalize that. Okay, getting to the end here. So here are our recommended motions for the city council tonight. All of them are to approve the rezoning application, six variance requests as described, and of course, to recommend approval of the Wildroot Phase subdivision preliminary plat application. Okay, then I'll just quickly let you all know, we've got a number of representatives from Cushing Terrell and the development team that I know wish to add a few things and are happy to answer any questions on their end, and I'll also point out that we've got some staff from both engineering and parks that are here to help with anything relating to their department specifics. I'll have admin staff quick add Nicole Olmstead as a presenter. She can let me know if, she can let you know if anyone else needs to be added as well, but she's kind of the main rep from Cushing Terrell, so if we can get that, that'd be awesome, and with that, I'm all wrapped up, and we'll pass it along.
Wonderful, thank you very much for your thorough presentation, Ms. Porcarey. Great job on that, and I am just making sure that we have, boop, Nicole Olmstead? Can you go ahead and unmute on your side, and whenever you're ready to go ahead and add to the presentation, go right ahead? I've got somebody at the podium up here. I've got Nicole on the computer. Okay, Nicole's gonna run the slides, great, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'll go ahead and get your microphone turned on, if you could go ahead and say your name for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Kylie Wilson, and I'm a managing principal at Pando Holdings, located at 205 Detroit Street in Denver, Colorado. Good evening, city council members. Thank you for your service to this community. I live in Denver, but my respect and connection to this state are deep. I've been coming to Montana all my life, drawn by family, community, and the natural beauty of this place. Our goal with this project is not just to develop real estate, but to create a neighborhood that will be an asset for the area and that aligns with the goals and objectives of this city. I am proud that the work we do will help with local housing attainability. Throughout Montana, housing affordability has become a significant issue facing state and local leadership. As you are well aware, Missoula is not exempt from this reality. Building more housing is crucial to making homes more attainable across the board. The pursuit of this project began years ago. One of our first meetings was a call with key city officials where we outlined a vision that included apartments, townhomes, and single-family. The encouragement we received affirmed that this site was a priority and aligned with the city's growth and housing policies. Today, we are not just planning, but have 203 apartments under construction, with the first wave of residents having moved in last month. From the outset, our vision has been consistent. The initial plans we floated to the city laid the foundation for what we present to you today, a plan shaped over the years through collaboration with staff. Our guiding principles have been to maximize views and open areas, create a system of trails and parks that connect into the city grid, and build a community with appropriate density and multiple product types. We have designed the subdivision so that over 20% of the site will remain open. You are going to see that we have created a neighborhood where people will love to live, where they can enjoy the trails, parks, vistas, and the sense of place that is distinctly Missoula. Zach Graham from Graham Engineering is here to present the more technical aspects of the design.
Thank you, Mr. Graham?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time tonight. Again, my name is Zach Graham, 4350 Ravalli Street, Bozeman, Montana, and that is Suite B. On behalf of the whole design team and ownership, we are really excited to finally be in front of the council tonight, after having partnered with city leadership and staff over the past two years to bring us to this point. We're excited to be a part of a great vision that will bring approximately 450 much-needed housing units to the city of Missoula. I'm going to be giving a high-level review of the city's design development, excuse me, of the project's design development to supplement the city's staff report. The project is located on the south side of the city of Missoula, along Hillview Way. Located in the Moosecann Gully neighborhood in the south hills, this area of town offers convenient access to schools and open spaces, and close proximity to the Brooks Avenue Commercial Corridor and Missoula's vibrant downtown core. The area to the west across Hillview Way is the established residential neighborhood, Elk Hills neighborhood, featuring attached and detached homes and the condominium complex, Village at Elk Hills. To the south, Hillview Way connects many looping, walkable neighborhoods with a diverse mix of housing types, including single-family, townhome, and multifamily at a variety of scales. These neighborhoods are anchored around the many open spaces and Skyview Park. To the north are winding streets, leading to single-family homes nestled alongside the hillside, leading to High Park and the Highlands Club Golf Course. East of the project site is a transitional area. Directly to the east is an undeveloped parcel owned by the Missoula County School District, then an unannexed, large rural residential parcel. Looking further east towards Whittaker Drive is the city limits once again, with the Mansion Heights PUD. We desired from early in this project to partner with the city to meet their housing goals. Part of the initial due diligence that began more than three years ago was a meeting with city leadership to confirm that the development of this property could be achieved in a manner that complied with the planning goals of the city. Some of the goals that were discussed were the future land use designation of the parcel and the associated density that matches the proposal before you today. We also evaluated the property in accordance with the annexation policy of the city. With the property, both within the current utility services area and annexation area A, it was confirmed that this project fit the logical growth pattern the city intends by avoiding non-contiguous growth boundaries while designing a project in conformance with the future land use plan. When thinking about creating a new neighborhood, it's important to consider features both on and off of the site. In this case, the most influential design drivers external to the site included an existing public roadway easement running along the southern property, excuse me, property boundary of the site, requiring connection to Rymel Road. That was discussed in the staff report. The city of Missoula prioritized the use of this easement for any proposed neighborhood roadway network. There are also two connection points off of Hillview Way identified that would need to align with Village View Way and Clear View Way. All of these existing elements drove the alignment of the proposed roadways. Additionally, the existing trail network located in the area was also critical to consider, in order to create a walkable pedestrian network connecting pedestrian paths along Hillview Way through the site to the east. Finally, providing future connections to adjacent properties that are not yet developed was also considered. These connection points would need to provide access to the property to the north, south, and east. As a follow-up to the planning board meeting, it should be noted for the record that the width of the easements to the north were considered during the design and retained at 60 feet, as it is expected they will only be used for utilities, not access. This is due to steep slopes going north that won't allow the adjacent owner to meet road-grade requirements. We have an exhibit to show this in more detail if requested during that question-and-answer These external connections, along with possible future connections to the east, provided the design restraints for connection of the development to the overall transportation network. Conservation lots to the south influenced the location of the primary pedestrian corridor, which resulted in reduced density adjacent to these easements. In this slide, you will begin to see the framework of the proposed neighborhood take shape. Here you can see the locations of the external and future roadway connections with the internal roadway network. The site topography was the dominating driver for the proposed design. The site generally slopes from east to west, with areas of steep slopes that are undevelopable, and over 200 feet of vertical relief from the lowest to highest point of the site. In the southwest corner is Moosecann Gully, a drainage and riparian area that needed to be protected with other open space areas. The trail network was designed to both allow the user to interact with the park and open space while providing ready access from each of the lots. Bringing these internal and external drivers together results in a concept in conformance with the proposal before you today. Here you can see how future connections were planned within a pedestrian-scale neighborhood road network. Working within the constraints of the existing topography, the team developed the roads that emphasize safety along with functionality. This image also depicts how the open space areas protect the riparian area, and how the pedestrian pathways provide for continuous travel throughout the neighborhood with conscientious and safe crossing locations. The open space locations, pedestrian connections, and neighborhood road network create the backbone of what we are proposing tonight. Wildroot is a 106.6-acre community, with 41 of those acres proposed for annexation. There are 21.9 acres of common open space and over 14,000 lineal feet, or 2.65 miles of new trail, all open to the public and maintained by the HOA. Moosecann Gully is preserved and adjacent to a proposed park space totaling 7.78 acres. There is an eight-foot wide pathway that will connect to an existing underpass and provide walking or biking access to the park space from the and provide walking or biking access to the park space from the south. Aligning with the city vision to see this property developed for housing, the project creates 203 multifamily units that are already under construction, 21 townhome lots, and 226 single-family lots. The thoughtful design lays out the lots placing higher-density residential units closer to Hillview Way with gradually less intense townhome and single-family residential lots planned as the property slopes up to the east. The diversity of housing creates residential opportunities to fit many lifestyles and life stages while incorporating pedestrian-friendly access and connections to amenities along the Hillview Way corridor. As described in the staff report, the project relies on the approval of a number of variances. The subdivision design necessitates these variances due to many of the external and internal drivers previously presented. That said, the most notable driver is the site topography. These areas are for a turnabout, block length, street profile, and direct public street access in Phase 2 where the townhomes are located. Wildroot is planned to be constructed in seven phases, inviting new residents into the neighborhood over time. The multifamily named Pine at Wildroot is Phase 1 and currently under construction, with residents already having moved into the first completed building. Phase 2 is the designated area for townhomes. Phases 3 through 7 are for single-family lots. Each phase will be constructed with fully-functional infrastructure and pedestrian access to the overall trail system. The phases will be constructed gradually over time. While there is an exhaustive narrative in the application of how this project conforms with the growth policy and overall city policy and goals for new development, I would like to touch briefly on this alignment from a high level. This project aligns with the city's stated housing goals by providing attainable and fair housing through an efficient use of the land that appropriately places lots within developable areas while also providing multiple types of housing from multifamily to townhome and single-family. Even the single-family lots have been designed with variable lot sizes to provide for different home sizes. Overall, the development complies with the land use and zoning intent to decrease housing density as the development progresses east from Hillview Way. The design provides appropriate vehicle and pedestrian transportation linkage with an overall community character and sense of place that is congruent with what makes Missoula such a great place to live. Natural areas are preserved and proposed in appropriate places, providing trails, open space, and a park, all while being connected with local services through the existing adjacent transportation network. As an area designed through the growth policy and zoning code for development, the project provides the needed housing in the right place without unnecessary sprawl to help reduce growth pressure while providing for the necessary infrastructure to accommodate the growth. One of the goals of the project was to develop reasonable design guidelines for the townhome and house designs that produce a sense of place that is faithful to regional traditions while requiring quality yet affordable materials. The intent is that the homes will encourage a visual interest and architectural compatibility throughout the development. The design guidelines encourage energy efficiency and consistent landscape requirements with planting requirements that promote responsible water usage for long-term sustainability. In this artistic rendition, we are looking northwest from over the proposed development. You can see Hillview Way, Moosecangoli, and the Village at Elk Hills in the foreground. Rymel Road is in the distance on the right and Mount Sentinel in the background. You can see how the proposed neighborhood fits in appropriately with the existing residential developments that surround it. The next view of the project will be from the trail adjacent to the stormwater detention facility right at the front of the project and the lower part of your screen that you can see there. So this view is looking to the east from the stormwater pond at the park and multifamily development behind it. The location of the park next to Moosecangoli provides further protection and transition to the existing riparian area. The concept park design consists of terraces that facilitate various future amenities and places for community enjoyment. The turf area is limited to just what is requested by the City Parks Department, which limits irrigation while also providing native recreation opportunities. The Moosecangoli Park provides a recreational anchor and hub connecting off-site trails to the larger onsite trail network within the development. In closing, this thoughtful and distinctly Missoula design is before you today due to a lot of vision and hard work between the ownership consultant team and city staff. We are thankful to city engineering, public works, planning, parks, and everyone else at the city for their hard work, many hours of review and coordination, as well as patience to address all the challenges of bringing this to you before you today. On behalf of the ownership, we value the partnership that has developed between our team and yours as we look to bring much-needed housing through thoughtful design and quality development to the community. To the council and Missoula community, we thank you for your consideration. Before turning it over to questions, we do want to acknowledge one item that was brought up at the LUP meeting. A question came up in the meeting regarding the variance request for having a sidewalk on each side of the road to only having a sidewalk on one side of the road. That was variance number five along Rymel. For clarification, this was requested due to topography and the sidewalk having to meet ADA compliance on both sides of the road. And also for clarification, the mitigation measures are to provide a two-foot-wide trail on the south side and increase the width of the sidewalk on the north side from five feet to eight feet. Snow removal would be limited to the sidewalk on just the north side just because of feasibility of trying to keep a trail, like a non-paved trail clear in the winter. So, but that will provide year-round access from the upper portion of the single-family down to the park and Hillview Way. With that, thank you again for your time, and we are available for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graham, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Olmstead for the additional presentation this evening. And so we will now move on to questions from council. And I see Counselor Jordan has her hand raised. Counselor Jordan, go right ahead.
Thank you. I think this one is for Ms. Porcarey. You may have covered this, but I'm just curious about Lot 1. It's big and different, and I'm wondering why, if there's a reason for that.
Are you thinking of Lot 1 that is the multifamily there? Or are you thinking of like just north of Rymel Road?
Let me share my opinion here. Let's see.
Are you talking about Lot 1 right here?
In Phase 1?
Yeah, so Lot 1 north of Rymel Road right here.
Yeah.
You can actually see it going around the screen.
Thank you.
But that's the multifamily lot that's going in right now.
Thank you. Couple other questions if that's all right, Mayor?
You bet.
Thank you. I am curious about provisions for stormwater overflow. I noticed that when you described the stormwater infrastructure that they're going to be holding ponds with non-still-tradable liners. So what happens if there's too much water and they overflow?
I'll have Zach probably take a swing at that since he's the engineer on the project. And if we need it from a city side, Troy Monroe is also here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham?
Yep. All right. Do I need to introduce myself each time, or can I just?
I think you're fine. Yeah. As you're coming up this frequently, we know who you are. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, so it was noted that the ponds are not designed, neither of the three detention systems that are designed for infiltration. That was due to concerns from city engineering in terms of infiltration. So we are capturing, all the stormwater goes to each of the three facilities. Those are all designed for the 100-year storm event. If there is any overflow, it would overflow onto beyond the 100-year event. It would overflow onto Hillview Road, which would then go into Moosecangoli and down Moosecangoli.
Ms. Jordan, did you hear that answer adequately?
I did, yeah, thank you. I have a couple more questions if that's appropriate.
Yes, it is. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm curious about a term that I think it was a developer used called regional traditions. When talking about the development and the layout, I'm just curious what regional traditions means because in my book, regional traditions refers to Native American traditions and wondering if that's what you're referring to or if perhaps there is a different meaning of what regional traditions is.
Hi, I can take a stab at that one. That's Nicole Olmstead. I'm with Cushing Terrell. Is that okay, Kylie? Regional traditions, and this says at least for the design guideline portion, meant to be talking about that neighbor connection, talking about front porches, making sure that there are, you know, yard spaces for people to, you know, play in and have good, have nice landscaping, that sort of thing. So regional tradition was to talk about more of that fine aesthetic than anything else.
Thank you for that. And I just have one last question.
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm just curious if any of these units or homes or apartments are going to be made permanently affordable as it relates to Missoula's AMI at 120%?
Not that I'm aware of at this time, but if the developer has a different opinion or a different plan that I'm unaware of, please join in.
Come on up, Mr. Wilson.
Don't have a plan to make anything permanently affordable at this point. Open to trying to work with, I don't know if there's a city agency that focuses on that. If there's anything we can do to help, I think we'd be open to that for sure. Understand it's a big issue. It's a big issue everywhere, so not ignoring it.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And going forward, there is the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. We do have a workforce housing program. Maybe an opportunity to look into it. And I realize the buildout of this subdivision is some years, so, yeah. Thank you. Ms. Jordan, thank you for your questions. Appreciate that. All right. And Counselor Melson?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Actually, for the developer, building off of what Counselor Jordan said, in your presentation, it did say that there is alignment on the growth policy, and there was a bullet there about affordability. So can you speak to how these market rate units are compatible with our affordability goals?
Sure. You know, I think this is a tough one to answer straight up. But I think, from my experience, I think the more housing that gets built, it releases more affordable housing down the line. There have been studies that have been done that say, I don't want to throw facts out, but that for every new market rate housing unit that's built, there are units freed up for neighborhoods that are lower than the AMI. So I guess my hope is that by building more housing, we create affordable housing across the board.
Another follow-up?
Yeah, absolutely. Go right ahead.
Sorry. Curious to learn more about the history of the Hillview Heights overlay and in particular, the SID. Looks like that was created, I don't remember what year, but there are two districts, number 43 and number 44, both for street lighting. And I'm curious whether these new units will be, will that SID be expanded to include these units? Will they also be paying into the street lighting, or will that be handled by the development itself?
Are you asking for street lighting along Hillview Way?
Yeah, there's two SIDs, special improvement districts, number 43 and number 44. And they are perpetual for street lighting along Hillview Heights. And I'm just curious whether these new units will be contributing to the street lighting in that area or will we need to expand the boundaries of that SID to provide for street lighting in this development?
At this point, I am not aware of anything that we're going to require in that regard. I don't know if anyone's here from Public Works that is more familiar with those SIDs that might have comments on it, or I know Davey's also done some subdivisions in the area. I see Troy's hand up, so I'll probably pass it on to him.
Thank you, Ms. Porcarey. I see Mr. Monroe, you've raised your hand. Mr. Troy Monroe?
Yes, thank you. Troy Monroe's city engineer. The SID 549 is the existing improvements to Hillview Way. The portion of the subdivision already in the city would be contributing to that. The portion that will be annexed in from the county, although we're not expanding the district, we do have a condition that those homes pay the same fee as if they were in the district. And we did work this out with the city attorney's office. As far as the Rymel Road within the subdivision, it is being designed as a collector. It does have streetlights, and that is being done by the developer, the installation. And then they become part of the road district, and the funding would be for maintenance and the actual electricity will be through the road district.
Got it. Thank you.
Absolutely. You bet. Thank you, Mr. Monroe. And Counselor Anderson, go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. My question is regards to parks. From the presentation, it seems as though the majority of the parkland is more kind of wildland with trails. And I'm wondering if there is any sort of going, plans for a developed park with play structures and grass that is irrigated and mowed. Given the size of this particular subdivision and the fact of where it's located, I am not aware of any close-by, you know, neighborhood, regional, or park that has, you know, dedicated and more formal play structures. And I would imagine this will be very sought after for families. So wanted to know if I just didn't catch that part in the presentation or if it's not included in the requirements for this, why not?
I see both Nathan's hand up, and I don't know if the developer, I think it might have just been the LUP conversation, but they did have a few images. So I don't know if they want to pull it up, but I do see that Nathan McLeod from Parks has something to say.
How about we hear from Mr. McLeod from Missoula Parks? And then Mr. Graham is here as well to provide some additional information.
Yeah, this is Nathan McLeod, City Missoula Parks and Recreation. The parkland will be a combination. Some of it will be more conservation land style. So it's, there's a lot of native grasslands, but then there's also going to be several terraces created. It is a hillside, so it's tricky to get usable developed park space, but we do have a plan to develop that with terraces. And I'm not sure, we haven't gone through the development agreement process, but it will have space that will be planned for future amenities such as a picnic shelter, playgrounds, things like that. The developer may want to invest in some of those. We haven't gone down that road yet. But it will be a developed park, so yes.
Mr. Graham, did you want to add to that presentation or that answer there?
That answers it for me unless they want to see an image.
Okay. And Counselor Anderson, there is an image if you wish to see any, you know, preliminary image for park concepts.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that at some point in all of this conceptual design that there is going to be some kind of more traditional park space and not just wildland space. May I have another question on a different topic if allowable?
You bet.
I think this question is going to be for Troy Monroe in regards to the SID that the folks that are paying in for the improvements on Hillview, these folks who will be living in this new subdivision will be paying into it. If you are currently already paying the SID, will you see any difference in your payment? Will it go down, or will this just increase additional funds for maintenance? Given the majority of folks who are currently paying into that SID live in Ward 5? I'm assuming I'm going to get that question.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Troy Monroe again. The SID is set up in anticipation of future growth, but it wasn't going to be like 100% recovery. So these areas will pay in based upon an established rate for the year of the SID is in service, the same as any new home in the district. And so therefore, the payment is done at the time of building permit. There won't be any reduction of those who have already paid. And there won't be any changes in the future because again, it wasn't a full recovery. It's based upon an anticipation of what will be developed. be developed.
Thank you so much for that answer, and that's all the questions I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Anderson. And Counselor Becerra.
Thank you, I have a few questions. The first one is in regard, I just want to say that I really appreciate the diversity of housing types that's being proposed in this development, and we often hear developers say that they want to create more than just a subdivision, that they want to create a neighborhood, and yet, I think I read, if I read correctly, maybe someone can correct me if not, but only 6,000 square feet is allotted for commercial development, 4,000 for a daycare, and 2,000 for a coffee shop. Is that right?
Mr. Graham.
I think you might be thinking of a different subdivision, that's Becerra. Is Mr. Graham up there though? Sorry.
Oh, am I? Okay. Is there any commercial being proposed? So my point still stands that when we think about creating a neighborhood, I think it's really important to try to provide some diversity of uses so that we can then have a lesser impact than the transportation networks. That always seems to be lacking in a lot of the subdivisions, and I understand that that's a function of, it's a numbers issue, and it's like creating the demand, so I keep hoping that we're going to have a subdivision that includes a little bit bigger commercial footprint as part of the proposal. My next question is about the traffic impact study. I believe that the level of service that's anticipated for the intersections that were studied would bring it to a level of service C, but I'm wondering what that is for the intersection of Hillview and 39th? And I think that question's for Troy.
Yes, thank you, Troy Monroe, City Engineer. Let me double check on that, and I will get right back to you.
Okay. And then I have another question regarding that, and that is that for that impact to 39th and Hillview, do we think that signal optimization is going to take care of the additional volume at that intersection? And then for Tara, I have a question about mountain line. Maybe this, I looked at the wrong list of attachments, but do we know what mountain line is, has commented in regards to a bus stop coordination for Hillview?
Yeah, at this time, they haven't made any comments about additional bus stops being needed. That being said, I think there's obviously room for that to change in the future as folks start to move in and they start to look at the utilization rate, but at this time, we've gotten no comment from them on that regard.
Okay. I think that's all I have. I'll wait for Troy to let me know.
Okay, that sounds good. And Mr. Monroe, while you're looking that up, we'll go ahead and move on to Counselor Campbell's questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too will need to interrupt Mr. Monroe for a couple of questions I have. So during Land Use and Planning Committee, last we met, I brought up some concerns about improvements off-site, particularly on Clearview Way as it leads down towards 23rd, and I just wanted to clarify what those improvements were, again specifically, and at what point do those improvements kick in as this subdivision builds out, is there a particular phase, a particular number of units that have to be built out first before those improvements kick in? If you could address that issue.
Yes, thank you, Troy Monroe again. Yes, they do have requirements for mitigation. Immediately, they have to do, add left turn lanes to the southbound of Hillview Way at both Clearview and Rymel at the respective time that those streets are completed. On Clearview and Garland headed towards 23rd Street, they are required to do traffic calming mitigation. It is in addition to what is going to be done by the Meadowview subdivision, which is an intersection improvement at Clearview and Garland. So it is designed to keep traffic on that segment at 25 miles per hour. The exact what that is hasn't been determined, it will come from their engineers' proposal as to what that traffic calming is.
Thank you, and one follow-up?
Sure, you bet.
And actually, I didn't think of this till Counselor Becerra brought it up about Hillview and 39th. I have a similar concern with 23rd and 39th coming down there, because we're talking about traffic coming down Clearview and then emptying down 23rd. And I brought this up in LUP as well last time, but I'm just wondering about if there's going to be any recentization of lighting down there, or expansion of the left turn lane down there, because as it stands now, I could tell you coming down there, on some days, you're lucky to get one, maybe two cars coming out of that cycle, being able to make a left turn onto, from northbound 23rd onto westbound 39th. So is there any discussion as far as improvements down there?
So at this time, there's not going to be any signal improvements at either 39th or at 23rd, based upon what the current configuration are at both of those locations, the improvements that were done at Hillview and 39th. We're showing that although it will be a decrease of level of service, it's not going to go down to the point of needing mitigation. So there won't be improvements at either one of those intersections at this time.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. And Mr. Monroe, did you want to, did you have a chance to find the information from, yeah, okay, I got it, I got it.
Not yet.
Okay, not a worry. And so we'll move on to Counselor Carlino.
Yeah, the developer said that there's already construction going on up there, I was just wondering if you could clarify what phases of this development can already be done currently under, without these votes, and yeah, if you could just clarify what can already be built there, if any of the phases are able to be done currently, or?
Kylie Wilson, that's just Phase 1, it was a use by right design, sets the apartments only.
And was that all of them apartments, or was that just? Okay.
203 apartments.
Thanks.
Great. All right. Counselor Cheryl.
Yeah, thanks. I think most of my questions have been answered either on Wednesday or by my colleagues, and, but I may have missed this. The timing of the either, I know we're going to do a study as far as where the roads come into Hillview Way from this subdivision, I also know that we're talking about a 20-year period of a build out, so I mean, traffic is going to change over that 20 years, but what is, what is the timing, and I don't even know how I'm asking this question, the timing, the anticipated timing of the completion of a roundabout or, I can't see that really closely, I'm going to really have to squint, but as it goes into Hillview Way, I mean, can you give me some sense of the timing and the phases of this project, and the timing of kind of those improvements?
Yeah, I don't believe we have any language set in stone in our condition, so it'll kind of just be up to engineering when that install happens, but they will be required to give us the additional right of way and get the design all sorted, just engineering level design, prior to, I believe it was Phase 1, I can double check that. But as far as the installation, Troy, do you have any idea, or is it kind of just going to happen as it happens?
Yeah, so the installation of the left turn lanes will be in coordination when those phases are, so at Clearview Way, it'll be with Phase 3, at Rymel Road, it'll be at Phase 5. The roundabout is not going to be installed as part of the subdivision itself. The roundabout is being designed because Rymel is a collector, so any collector, onto collector intersections need to be designed as a roundabout, but the traffic volume of needing that won't occur until development east of here occurs, whether that's the school property, or the surrounding vacant property that could be developed in the residential. So that's when the roundabout will come, is when the volume gets to be high enough.
Okay, thank you.
And excuse me, that should have been Phase 2 for the construction level drawings, just for the design, just for the record.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Sorry, Ms. Porcare, your microphone's just a little bit muffled, could you go ahead and just say that one more time, and then also identify the timeframe that Phase 2 will be initiated based on that chart that you provided?
Yep, just clarifying that it will be Phase 2, that they need to have those preliminary construction drawings to us, and then Phase 2 is set to be complete by 2027.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Counselor Anderson, do you want to go ahead while we continue to hold one question in the holding tank, while Mr. Monroe finds that answer?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thankfully, I do not believe my question is for Mr. Monroe, but my question, I appreciate Ms. Cheryl talking about phasing, because I realize that my curiosity's back to the park, and you know, given that this is a 20-year plan, when is the park portion, what phase is that going to be required to be completed so that the folks who live there are able to take part in it?
The first park right by Moose King Gully is part of Phase 1, so that'll be by 2026, and then Phase 3 is the other half of that park over to the east, and that'll be 2030. Thank you.
All right, you bet. All right, we have just one hand remaining, that's Counselor Becerra, I believe that's a holdover question? You're okay? All right. Mr. Monroe, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. I've had a chance to look at that traffic impact study, and it actually shows that the level of service will remain a level of service C for 39th at full build out. Specifically, it increases, the worst increase is the southbound approach, and at full build out, it extends it from 24 seconds currently to 28.8 seconds. So that's in anticipation of the delay at full build out.
Okay, you bet. Thanks for all the great questions, appreciate the staff being available, and also members of the development team. I believe that does wrap up council questions, just looking around here to make sure nobody else has any additional questions before we hear the main motion, main motions being made and put on the floor. So I'll look to Counselor Nugent, Land Use and Planning Chair, to read us the motions.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, it's only one page tonight, so.
Public comment is next.
I move City Council adopt a resolution to annex the subject property as shown in Exhibit A and apply R 5.4 residential city zoning to the property. I further move City Council approve the adoption of an ordinance to rezone the subject property as shown and legally described in Exhibits A and B for RM 1-35 residential multi-dwelling, RM 0.5 residential multi-dwelling, R8 residential, and B 2-1 community business with the Hillview Heights overlay to RM 0.5 residential multi-dwelling, RM 1-35 residential multi-dwelling, and R 5.4 residential, removing the Hillview Heights overlay from its entirety. I further move City Council adopt a variance from City Subdivision Regulations, Article 3, Section 3-020.5, to allow the construction of a hammerhead turnaround in the street Local 1. I further move City Council approve a variance from the City Subdivision Regulations, Article 3, Section 3-030.2.2A2, to allow a block length in excess of 480 feet in the street area of Local A. I further move City Council approve a variance from City Subdivision Regulations, Article 3, Section 3-030.2.2A2, to allow a block length in excess of 480 feet in the area of streets Local B East-West, Local D, Local E, and Local G. I further move City Council approve a variance from City Subdivision Regulations, Article 3, Section 3-030.2.2A2, to allow a block length in excess of 480 feet in the area of streets Local B North-South and Local C. Further move City Council approve a variance from City Subdivision Regulations, Article 3, Section 3-020.2.2B, to allow approximately 450 linear feet of Rymel Road to be constructed with a sidewalk on only the north side of the street. And I further move City Council approve a variance from City Subdivision Regulations, Article 3, Section 3-030.1.3C3, to allow proposed Phase 2 lots 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22 to be accessed via the alley and common area. And finally, I move City Council approve the Wild Root Phase subdivision preliminary application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff report.
Excellent, thank you very much, Counselor Nugent. All right, so motions are on the floor, this opens the public hearing. We'll now move to public comment and invite members starting here in the audience to come on up and provide public comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, identify your name, and come right up, come on up. I'll go ahead and help you out by timing up here, so you'll see this fancy little Jeopardy light up here.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right.
All right, good. My name is Nick Van Hole. I'm coming, thank you, counsel, in advance for your attention to this important matter. I'm coming to speak on behalf of myself and just many like-minded neighbors and my wife who are homeworking right now and not able to make the meeting, just to express several concerns related to this project and some disappointments that are heard in the meeting today. Just going through just a few items. First, the roundabout. It's been brought to my attention by others that this might be a wise move for the traffic flow there, considering the greater growth in the area. However, I don't, if it slows down traffic, if you've ever been down Hillview between 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning, it's a long line. If there can be any reinvestigation on whether that's going to slow things down for the thousands of people moving down, or if it's just going to accommodate the hundreds of people that are living to the side, that would be most appreciated. Moreover, the traffic is something that's going to be definitely a concern. I've heard from the other council members and the other people on the video that not all the traffic impact studies have been performed to date, but I would hope that the council members would see to that and see through that before any other planning is done to ensure that we don't get a host of congestion for residents, for all of our children going to school in the morning, and most of all, for any emergency services that need to be up and down on that day. With the time I have left, I want to go through to a bit of a broader topic that is still directly relevant to this matter, and that's the fact of what it's doing to Missoula. The point is, there's so much that doesn't make sense about so much of this, and I have to voice it, and there's a lot that's hard to swallow. First of all, the amount of units, 248 to 450 units, seems very astronomical. There's been a lot of things going around, there's been the East Missoula development coming, and yes, this is all the new housing that's going in, inevitably go in it sometimes, but with $40 million given from the Rockefellers, billionaire corporation out of New York, to build this place that was loaned by Stockman Bank, and the Rockefellers are helping building this, it really makes it hard for me and for all my friends that have been driven out of here over the years because of high costs, how that's going to help the housing situation. I look at this presentation, and it says HOA, I see Wild Root, homeowners association, and that's supposed to help the housing situation? Please, I'm kind of tired of looking at that thing. Mr. Wilson here was...
Sir, I'm sorry, we don't direct our comments to anybody in the audience, but we are at three minutes.
Okay, I understand, I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
In 30 seconds.
Okay, or less.
If you'll help me, please, I will. That's, that's fine. But when you come, I have to address that he was brought up because he has said something that's directly applicable to us, and that's affordable housing. When he asked affordable housing, about affordable housing, he said he didn't even look, he said he didn't even know, and for as much work as it's put into this, you'd think that if he cared as much about Montana, like he said he did at the beginning, that he would have done that. And Ms. Mayor and everybody in the council, I thank you for your time, but I am trusting you, hopefully, to engage all the developers, including the ones here, and you, hopefully, to engage all the developers, including the ones here, in greater responsibility in providing affordable housing, because that's not going to help the situation. It's not going to help Missoula.
Thank you for your comments. And your pen dropped on the floor. You might want to grab that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet. Are there other members of the public that wish to make public comment this evening? Anybody in the room? Come on up.
Mayor, Mayor, City Council, I'm Ed Brown. Like the other person, I live up above Hillview Way, way above Chief Charlo's school, and I'll walk down 39th, you know, down Hillview Way, all the way to 39th. And I have some comments about that road. A couple of years ago, there was a zoning to get the elevation of the base of where they're building five feet. When I walked past it, I'm above 5'3", and it looks like they've raised the level more than five feet. I haven't measured it. That may be minor. But I did ask if they were going to build turning lanes on Hillview Way for where Rymel meets Hillview Way, and they said there was no need for it. This is on the zoning board a couple of years ago. And now that I'm hearing about traffic circles, I'm hearing about left-hand turn lanes, and this goes to safety for traffic, for kids and everybody else. I don't know how a left-hand turn lane can be built when the new apartments that are already just about completed and the first phase is done, where people are already moving into, their sidewalks are already built right up to the bike lane, right up to the road, what's going to get condemned to expand that, to widen that, to make a left-hand turn lane? I don't know. I don't know how you're going to build a traffic circle without condemning some of Rymel and some of the condo apartments that are across from it. In addition, I didn't see it up on the, going north, on Hillview. There is a blind curve, and then it goes downhill, very sharp. And in the wintertime, forget good weather, in the wintertime, that could be an issue going uphill or going downhill with 240, with 200 units already being built and another 248 going in. I figure that's about 400 or 500 cars a day, and it could all be at about the same time, especially people who stop watching the Grizzly game. We know, we know how the traffic increases. So I am very concerned about that. People talked about 23rd Street. I'm concerned about that. 55th Street, you know, this traffic, and 55th Street, if anybody's been down that, traffic goes all the way over towards Walmart down that road. I just don't think there's been good traffic studies done. I am not an engineer. My brother is a retired engineer, and I've been talking to some engineers lately. They know that I understand them because my brother sent me something about Engineers Explained, and I think it goes right, cuts to this, and it's Engineers. Is that timing for me?
That is timed. That's three minutes.
Can I just, it's serious, but Engineers, from my brother explaining it to me, the world's divided into two parts, things that need to be fixed and things that need to be fixed after you've had a few minutes to tinker with them. And I think there's a lot of tinkering going on here, and there needs to be a lot of fixing before this gets passed.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Brown. Other members of the public, come on up.
Moore, M-O-O-R-E. Once again, I hear the word MRA. I haven't heard anything about how much the taxpayers are going to have to spend on this project. Y'all recently approved $10 million for a project to help a developer, I think it was going to be 29 units, but I'm not sure exactly what that is. It's way, way less than this gentleman wants to do. Your budget for last year made mine was like 20%. This year, I think it's 17%. Getting close to 40% in 10 years. Anybody who would apply to get this approved should be required to sign documents that they will not, under any circumstances, come to City Council/MRA for a dime, for one dime. And in fact, if I had my way about it, they'd be paying for all y'all's expenses and the people that were on the city payroll and the MRA payroll to get the project done. So the city doesn't bear any tax. This city, if it keeps on with these ideas it has, is going to go bankrupt. I think these, every citizen who is aware of what y'all are doing should, at some point, I thought it would have already happened, but at some point, do what you're doing.
Mr. Moore, want to bring it right back to the subdivision?
I'm sorry.
This is a public comment in regards to this subdivision annexation and rezoning for the Wild Root.
Yeah, about the money that you're going to spend in this project. $10 million for a shopping center, $5 million for a hotel, $3 million for another hotel.
Mr. Moore, I don't think we're talking about a hotel, but.
I'm talking about the money that's going to be spent on this project. And y'all aren't even addressing it. You could care less what the citizens have to pay to do the developments. If it's a development, it's got to be approved. Two mayors assured me that they were going to make us fortune on Sleepy Hollow. The sign for sale right now is laying on the ground facing down after, well, close to a year, probably, and then still hasn't been sold. City can't afford.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next public comment, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is John Rymel, spelled R-I-M-E-L, despite the, the voice recognition system comments to the contrary. As you probably know, my sister and I own land directly to the south of this subdivision. It's, it's a bit of a change to go from having a neighbor with one house to a neighbor who's going to have 450 houses. And change is hard. Our property is currently run as a small cow-calf operation. We placed it under easement with Five Valleys Land Trust in 2007. And I just wanted to, one of my concerns was when I contacted the county regarding the quarter mile of county road that is unmaintained from the end of Heaven's Gate to our cattle guard, I was told that to, before the county would accept it, we had to bring it up to county standards. And since my sister and I are the only two county residents living on that road, they said, well, we'll just do an RSID. And I was like, well, two residents, a quarter mile of an improved road, that's going to be a fairly serious chunk of change. And I didn't want to pay for it personally to, I find with the way it is. So that led to discussions with the city and with the developer. And I'm very pleased with the responsiveness of both the city and the developer to our concerns that that road might become a major back route in and out of this subdivision. It, because it is not up to the standards of a county road, unless you consider me running a rock rake over it a couple of times a year, road improvement. So I just wanted to, again, reiterate my thanks to both the city staff and to the developer for hopefully working out a solution to this issue, because I do think a bunch of traffic coming out that unmaintained and unimproved road and then going up and down Whittaker would be a disaster. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rymel. All right, other members of the public wishing to speak on this agenda item this evening? Anybody in the room? All right, how about online? Are there members of the public wishing to speak on this agenda item this evening? All right, not seeing any. Then that does wrap up our public comment for this agenda item. We'll now move back to City Council. These are questions and comments. So parliamentary debate, are there any council members that wish to comment? Not seeing any. Not seeing any in the room or online here. All right. Oh, yes, Counselor Carlino.
Sure, I'll offer a quick comment. I think with the code reform coming up, I suggest that we annex this in and handle some of these things through code reform. You know, they're already currently building these apartment buildings, and I think could be a good addition to Missoula's housing supply. I think a 20-year plan to slowly take over more and more open space and land up on our hilltops for single-family million-dollar-plus homes isn't necessarily going to help the housing crisis that we're experiencing right now. And I think that land is going to be worth a lot in the future. That could have been used for affordable homes, or for parks, or for trails, or for open space and wildlife. I think we should allow density like this, you know, all throughout the urban core and Missoula Valley. But I think, you know, imagine if we had, you know, allowed, you know, million, million dollars, single-family homes to take up Waterworks Hill, that would have been a big disappointment. So I think, you know, letting the apartments be built and going on with the code reform and annexing this in seems like a fair path forward. But I'm just not convinced that this is really the way to go, to take up, to use all of our open land space up on our hilltops like this for single-family million-dollar homes just to slowly be built over the next 20 years, seems like a big waste of land that I think we're going to regret in the future. But I think things like that could be appropriate in, you know, parts of town that are already developed, or, you know, the valley for.
Okay, thanks for your comment. And Counselor Vasika.
Quick clarifying question. There are no MRA funds going into this development. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions or comments from City Council? Yes, Counselor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. You know, I appreciate Counselor Carlino mentioning code reform, and I actually think that's a good follow-up to Counselor Basara's question earlier about commercial and kind of low-impact traffic and limiting trips. And I think it's just a good call to the public to continue to participate in the code reform process, because I think that some of the questions we have about this are, can maybe be addressed through that broader process. I would point out, you know, Waterworks is forever protected because the community invested in it through open space bonds, which is something, obviously, we've approved for some purchases in this version of council. We do have open space bonds, and this parcel of land has been for sale for several years. And I guess it must not have been something that fell into the greater plan around that. I'm not really sure how sometimes parcels come into, into that. So because of that, it is private land, and we are somewhat limited on what we get to tell people to do and not do. And that includes if they want to build houses that are entirely market rate, they're, they're allowed to do that. And the state legislature has weighed on that, weighed in on that a couple of different times. I don't necessarily agree with every stance they've taken on that, but these are the rules that we are governed by. And I know a lot of times when people come and comment on subdivisions, they, they want us to say no, or, or basically tell people what to do. And sometimes the implication is that we have the ability to do that. And unless we land bank, unless we control the land, which, you know, we are doing that project out off of Scott Street, and it's an example of, of the community investing in a project and then us controlling the outcomes a little bit more. But unless we do something like that, these are the laws that the state kind of guides it on, and we have to make our decisions based on findings of fact and conclusions of law. And that conclusion of law can't just be, I don't want development. So I, it's a tough conversation, and I appreciate the comments we've received, both in person today and via email. And I really appreciate the kind of conversations and the compromise between the developers and the neighbors in regards to Rymel Road. And I think that that's kind of an important acknowledgement of something that's protecting a large area right up to something that is kind of developing as the city grows. And I think we're going to see more of that as we have protected some parcels of land. But I appreciate them working well together on this, so.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent. Are there other comments from council members? Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. I think I just want to build off Mr. Carlino and Mr. Nugent. I think they both made really good points. There isn't a lot we can do about developer, developer proposals. It's frustrating to see our town change, and it's frustrating that our town has been discovered. I'm sure the Native Americans are ultimately the most frustrated because we're on stolen land. But I, I wish that we could put more conditions on developments. You know, Mr. Nugent's right, we don't have a lot of control or power over what we can and cannot allow. I would like to just implore developers to come and, and consider affordable housing. I think the notion that building will reduce pressure and provide affordable housing is a bit of a pipe dream. I think that we have a lot of folks who are building maximum-density developments and capitalizing on the fact that they can build maximum-density developments with zero consideration for building permanently affordable housing, and there's nothing we can do about it on City Council. I just wish that developers would come in and say, hey, look, we want this town to stay cool. We want this town to have housing for people who serve our coffee and serve our beer and clean our tables and fix our cars, and for our firefighters and our police. And we want to make sure that they have housing so this town stays cool and interesting and doesn't just turn into a town full of very wealthy people. But we can't do that. So, you know, asking developers if they consider making permanently affordable housing is something that I'd like to do. I certainly cannot base my decision on their, on their response, and it would be illegal for me to do that. But I'd just like to implore the developer, think about it. Think about what makes this town special and what you can do as a developer to keep this town special. Because what makes this town special is the diversity that we have, the socioeconomic diversity. And if we lose that through market-rate housing, it's going to change, and it won't be, it won't be the fun town. But you have already built your development, and the checks will be cashed, and there's nothing we can do about it. And so I guess I just wanted to make a point that we are, our hands are tied on council. It's entirely frustrating. However, builders and developers could come in and say, hey, look, I'm going to make 10% of this development permanently affordable, and it would still meet their bottom line, and we don't see that. But there's nothing we can do. So thank you for letting me have my comment. I appreciate the time.
You bet, Counselor Jordan. And any other council comments or questions at this time? All right. Not seeing any. I'll take the liberty, as the mayor here, just to mention that we will continue to deploy the city's housing strategies as best we can. That something, like a tool that hasn't been mentioned in name, but certainly has been referred to, would have been something like inclusionary zoning, and that is not allowable by state law unless you more or less incentivize willing inclusionary zoning, which typically then is cash incentive to the developer. And so that is one of the reasons that we continue to explore the pilot program through the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, which is our workforce housing program. Again, it is not part of this program. I did hear the developers say they'd be interested in taking a look at that in future phases. And as your mayor, and I would continue to, to stress the importance for us to maintain as many tools as we possibly can to ensure that we can affect any level of affordability, whether that be for rental or homeownership going forward. But that is neither here nor there specifically for your decision tonight. But in terms of talking about policy, let's make sure we keep the tools in the toolbox. Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate the opportunity to add to the commentary there. And we'll ask Claire Trimble to begin our roll call votes. And because of comments received this evening, we do have three different levels of decision based on annexation, based on zoning, based on variances, and the final subdivision plat. We'll take each motion separately. So, Ms. Trimble, when you're ready, we're ready for your roll call votes.
All right, let's begin at the top. First vote is going to be.
First vote is going to be on adopting a resolution to annex the subject property, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer? Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson? Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Vasika? And that's 11 in favor, none opposed. Moving on, the next is a motion, the adoption of ordinance to rezone the subject property as shown in Exhibits A and B from residential multi-dwelling, R0.5 residential multi-dwelling, R8 residential, and B2-1 community business with the Hillview Heights overlay to another zoning, beginning with Basara.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino? Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika? And Anderson? That's nine in favor, two opposed. Next is a vote to approve a variance from City Subdivision Regulations Article 3, Section 3-020.5 to allow construction of hammerhead turnaround in the local street, Local I, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you. Nugent?
Yes.
Savage? Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Basara? And that's nine in favor, two opposed. Moving on is to approve a variance from local subdivision regulations to allow a block length in excess of 480 feet in a street area of Local A, beginning with Carlino.
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
And Campbell? That's 10 in favor, one opposed. Next vote is to approve a variance from the City Subdivision Regulations to allow a block length in excess of 480 feet in the area of Streets Local B, East-West, Local D, Local E, and Local G, beginning with Farmer. Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino? And that is 10 in favor, one opposed. Next vote is to approve a variance to local subdivision regulations to allow a block length in excess of 480 feet in the area of Streets Local B, North-South, and Local C, beginning with Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
No.
And Farmer? That's also 10 in favor, one opposed. Next vote is to approve a variance from local subdivision regulations to allow approximately 450 linear feet of Rymel Road to be constructed with a sidewalk only on the north side of the street, beginning with Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell? Carlino?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan? That's 10 in favor, one opposed. Our next vote is to approve a variance from the City Subdivision Regulations to allow proposed Phase 2 Lots 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22 to be accessed via the alley and common area, beginning with Nugent.
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
No.
Farmer? Jordan? Nelson? That's nine in favor, two opposed. Our final vote of the evening is to approve the Wild Root Phase subdivision preliminary plat application subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law in the staff. Beginning with Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Nugent? And that's nine in favor, two opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trimble, and thank you, everyone, both staff and members of the development team for being available for all council questions this evening. Members of the public, thank you for coming and providing comment. That does wrap up that item of wild-root phased subdivision annexation and rezoning. We'll go ahead and move on to new business. Our first item is 6.1, and that's the Caris River Access Construction Manager at Risk, or otherwise known as CMAR, Contract Amendment Guaranteed Maximum Price. And we do have Nathan MacLeod here from Missoula Parks and Rec to present on this. Mr. MacLeod?
Thank you, Mayor. I will share my screen or some images while I'm talking.
Perfect.
See, everybody seeing that? So my name is Nathan MacLeod with City Missoula Parks and Recreation, and I'm here today to talk about the Caris River Access Project. So this project was originally envisioned in the North Riverside Parks and Trails Master Plan as part of the Downtown Master Plan. The goals for the project include to provide ADA access to the ordinary high-water mark, provide better access to low-water beaches in Brennan's Wave for people of all abilities, reduce riverbank erosion, and restore riparian vegetation along the banks of the Clark Fork, and provide increased capacity for viewing and enjoying the river at Caris Park. Caris River Access is part of the larger Clark Fork River Restoration and Access Project, which seeks to restore riverbanks in downtown Missoula. In order to close and restore some areas of the riverbank, providing hardened river access in other areas is necessary. Caris Park was identified as a primary location for providing hardened river access due to the proximity to Brennan's Wave, downtown, Parks and Trails, and the number of events and people in the park. This project is funded through a $1.2 million grant from the Economic Development Administration. Local match consisted of funding from Missoula Redevelopment Agency, Missoula Downtown Foundation, and the 2018 Open Space Bond Funds. In February 2024, City Council approved a contract with Dick Anderson Construction as the construction manager at risk for this project. The contract amendment before you today follows public bidding of the various scopes of the construction project and establishes a guaranteed maximum price of $1,688,317 for the delivery of the completed project. This includes a 10% contingency of $153,483. Our total revenue for the construction phase of the project is $1,525,380. Currently, we are short $162,937, which is largely the contingency amount. However, Parks and Recreation has identified numerous paths to addressing the shortage with an immediate stop-gac measure of using park district reserve funds to cover the shortage. After our thorough review of the bids, the construction manager, project engineer, and city staff recommend awarding the contract to establish a guaranteed maximum price and beginning construction as soon as possible. Delaying and rebidding the project will result in a more expensive project, with construction costs typically increasing yearly, and could also result in conflicts with downtown SAM and other planned construction projects in the area. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the project.
Great. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. MacLeod, and we'll move it over to questions from council. First question is from Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. MacLeod, I'm wondering if you could talk about the kind of vegetation that's going to be put in. I think one of the things that really concerns me about having a big dike through town is the fact that we can't allow big trees to grow and provide shade and habitat, and I'm curious what the plans are for vegetation. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. So on the screen right now is our landscaping plan for the project, and, well, it's probably a little bit hard to see for you guys. It basically consists of native vegetation that you would normally find along the banks of the Clark Fork. So there, as you said, the Army Corps of Engineers does not allow us to have any trees that are larger than four inches in diameter on the levee, because it can be susceptible to flooding, and the trees could then fall in the water and be ripped out and damage the levee. And so the trees and the shrubs that we're proposing are all things that would not get that large, so things like choke cherries, snowberry, willows, red twig dogwoods, as well as grasses and perennials. So basically, if you look at the plans, we have the ADA-accessible ramps that come down on either side, and then there's vegetations landscaped above that between the main Ron's River Trail and that area. Below that, we will be using willow staking, and that's because those are primarily areas that will flood seasonally, and so you have to have species that are really tolerant of that kind of flooding.
Okay. Thank you for your question, and Counselor Cheryl.
Yeah, thanks, Nathan. And as you know, I really love this project, so I'm excited about it. I'm really excited about, this is a big improvement in my mind over the first iteration that I saw back in '18 of kind of the thought around there. One thing, a thought about how we would do this area of the river. One thing I don't remember, so maybe if you could go over it, is how much of the open-space bond this piece of the river improvement is going to be, and kind of what the MRA contribution was and things like that. Do you mind going over kind of the?
Yeah.
High level?
Happy to. So we had $1.2 million from the Economic Development Administration. MRA contributed, Missoula Redevelopment Agency contributed $100,000. The Missoula Downtown Foundation contributed $150,000. Now, $100,000 of the Missoula Downtown Foundation's contribution went towards the engineering contract to design this, and then open-space bond funds were in the amount of $155,000. I will say that, so we intend, we would like to award the project. We do have the shortfall. Open-space bond funds were allocated for $1 million in total for the Clark Fork River Restoration and Access Project. It is a potential option to be able to use more of those funds for this site, although we're trying to not do that so that we can preserve those funds for the other sites that we've identified that we would like to do next year.
All right. Thanks for your question. Any other questions from council? Not seeing any. All right. That wraps up the questions portion, and we'll go to Chair Savage for the main motion, please.
All right, the recommended motion is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract agreement with Dick Anderson Construction for construction of the Caris River Access Project and to establish a guaranteed maximum price in the amount not to exceed $1,688,317 for the delivery of the project pending review and approval of the Economic Development Administration.
All right, thank you very much. And main motion is on the floor. This opens the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to make public comment this evening? Not seeing any in the room. How about online? Is there anybody online wishes to make public comment on this agenda item? Not seeing any online either. Give it another second here. All right. That wraps up, then, our public comment and the public hearing. We'll bring it back to council to see if there are any questions or comments. And Counselor Cheryl?
I'm just going to continue with the theme of how much I love this project. You know, one of the things as we, as I saw this new design, and there was a design, kind of a preliminary design that was done back in '18, this is such a great improvement to it, and, you know, one of the things is the river still, and even in that design in '18, I think would still feel unaccessible from Caris Park for a lot of people. I mean, I love the fact that it's ADA-accessible, but I think, you know, my in-laws that, you know, are not, do not need any ADA accommodations couldn't get down there, right? I mean, there's lots of young kids and families, and with young kids that can't get down to the river very easily. So I love this. I'm excited to vote for it. I'm excited to have this as part of another amenity that is well-thought-out for our community. So thanks for your work on it, Nathan.
Excellent. Thank you for your comments. Any others? All right. I share your enthusiasm and excitement for this project. It's going to be an incredible improvement and accessibility and safety for the community and for the river itself. All right, not seeing any other council questions or comments, then we'll go ahead and move to a roll-call vote.
All right, voting on item 6.1, the Caris River Access Construction Manager at Risk Contract Amendment Guaranteed Maximum Price, beginning with Savage.
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Basara?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And Nugent? And that passes unanimously with 11 in favor and opposed.
Okay, fantastic. Thanks, everybody. Nathan, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Thanks for being available as well for questions that come your way. We will then...
Yep.
You bet. We'll wrap up that item and move on to 6.2, which is a, setting the public hearing for a rezone of 2139 South Seventh Street West from our 5.4 residential to from R 5.4 residential to RM 1.5 multi-dwelling. And I do believe we have Zoe Walters joining us for staff presentation? Is that in fact the case? Or we're just, we're just setting the public hearing, yeah? That's what I thought. Okay, sorry about that. So, Mr. Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I move City Council set a public hearing on September 23rd, 2024, and preliminarily adopt an ordinance to rezone the subject property located at 2139 South Seventh Street West and legally described as lots 14, 15, and 16 in block 73 of Daley Edition Number 2 to the City of Missoula, Missoula County, Montana, together with the north one-half of the vacated alley in said block lying south of an adjacent, of and adjacent to said lots 14, 15, and 16, located in Section 29 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, PMM from R 5.4 residential to RM 1.5 residential multi-dwelling, and refer this item to the Land Use and Planning Committee for presentation and discussion on September 18th, 2024. This is the first reading.
Excellent. Thank you very much. This is the first reading of this public hearing. Is there any public comment this evening on this agenda item? Not seeing any in the room, and how about online? I might have just skipped over questions from council if there was to be any, but I think I had asked, this is always one of those weird things about first readings. Do we vote? We do. That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Have in a moment. Thanks. All right. So any comments or questions from council? Not seeing any. Great. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble.
All right. Beginning with Cheryl.
Yes.
Mesika.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Basara.
I think she just stepped away.
Basara?
I believe she just stepped away momentarily.
All right. Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
And is Mrs. Basara back?
Yes, she is.
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously with 11 in favor and opposed.
All right. Wonderful. Thanks, everybody. Then that wraps up that agenda item. We will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda this evening. Items on the consent agenda were approved in City Council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. So, Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
On tonight's consent agenda, we will begin with a motion to ratify accounts payable or claims for checks dated last week, September 3rd, 2024, in the amount of $780,218.15, and have a motion to approve accounts payable for checks dated September 10th, 2024, in the amount of $714,171.05. Moving on, we have a motion to adopt a resolution of the City of Missoula from the City Council releasing a public utility easement running through a vacated alley lining between Keith Avenue and Pacquett Avenue at an east-west direction, block number 34 of Hammond Edition Number 3. This public utility easement lease will help facilitate the construction of a new residence hall at the University of Montana campus. Next, we have a motion to approve a waiver of the MNC 9.30 Noise Control for HTR Inc., an engineering contractor for Montana Department of Transportation, for structural testing in the Orange Street underpass. Our next motion is to set a public hearing for Monday, September 16th, 2024, to review the City of Missoula Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR, for HUD-funded programs for the program year 2023. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a $117,500 sub-award for the Missoula Public Library from the city's National Institutes of Health Science Education Partnership Award. We have a first reading and preliminary adoption to set a public hearing on September 23rd, 2024, and preliminarily adopted ordinance rezoning the subject property located at 123 South Curtis Street, legally described as the south 110 feet of Lot 5 in Curtis and Major's Edition as described in Book 1088 at page 547, microreference of Missoula County, located in the southwest one-quarter of Section 20 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, PMM, Missoula County, Montana, from RT 10 Residential Two-Unit or Townhouse to RT 5.4 Residential Two-Unit Townhouse, and refer this item to the Land Use and Planning Committee for presentation on September 18th, 2024. Our final item today is a motion of making Danny Tenenbaum to the alternate number-one position on the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board with a term beginning immediately and ending December 31st, 2024.
Great. Thank you, Claire. Are there any members of council that wish to separate an item tonight? Not seeing any. All right. How about public comment on the consent agenda? Any public comment? Okay. Not seeing any in the room. How about online? Okay. Not seeing any online, then we can do a voice vote on the consent agenda, please.
All right. Voting on tonight's consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. That wraps up Agenda Item Number Eight. We move on to Regular Business. Our first item under Regular Business under Committee Reports is for the Climate Conservation and Parks Committee, and we are in a committee report under Regular Business. This item was approved in committee, but I do believe that we wanted to have a conversation here. There were some follow-up questions. And so we are starting out with Claire Trimble providing a brief overview framing the overall city boards and commissions landscape. And then we're also joined by Ann Geiger here to provide additional staff report. So, Ms. Trimble, are you ready for that part of the presentation?
Absolutely.
Great.
This will be very brief. I was just asked to comment on sort of the legal differences between our current board and commission structure, and because the proposition here was to move to more of an ad hoc or task force structure. And so what I wanted to distinguish was that when we do make a board or commission that has, that is authorized by City Council to either act in its stead or make recommendations, it does create a formal board under state law, but then has to operate within our formal public meeting and sunshine law context where we have certain requirements regarding notice of agendas and forum requirements and minutes requirements. And it's a very formal structure. We clearly have many boards of this nature, and we have had trouble in past years filling these boards' spots and volunteer, with volunteers who can come on that sort of regular cadence and commit to that sort of monthly or more time commitment that is required for that kind of board. And sometimes we often have trouble finding meeting dates and times that people can meet on that sort of regular cadence. And we've also had difficulties in different boards meeting forum. So the formality and requirements of this structure do have some limitations on the kinds of people who can volunteer and provide their input to the city. And so I just, my task here tonight was just to remind everyone that when we do make a formal board, that is a sub-board, a formal kind of political subdivision of the City Council, we have all of these extra requirements about bylaws and forum and minutes that can provide a hindrance to getting the right people on the right project at the right time. So I think that's why Ann wants to talk a little bit more now.
Okay, thank you. And I should have checked in with Chair Savage to make sure you were okay with me starting right away with the brief follow-up from staff reports. And then prior to you kicking off, we'll hear Ann, and then we'll hear from you on the motion, if that's okay? Okay, great. Ms. Geiger.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. And I do have a few slides, so I'll share my screen.
Okay.
Technical fun. Let's see.
There you go.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. My name is Ann Geiger. I'm in the CPDI department, and my title is Strategic Initiatives Manager. So I supervise our climate and sustainability team and also our housing policy specialist. And I spoke at the August 28th Climate Conservation and Parks Committee meeting about the resolution before council today. City staff has reached out to and/or spoken with council members since the 28th to address more detailed questions, and tonight we wanted to share additional information based on the questions raised at CCP on the 28th. A couple of brief points as context. The Energy and Climate Team, or ECT, the volunteer board, was formed in the early 2000s when the city had no climate staff. Now the city has a climate and sustainability team of three full-time members plus management support. These staff roles also cover the same tasks and goals assigned to the ECT in the ECT's resolution and bylaws. In recent years, the city has also adopted four very ambitious climate goals, shown here on this slide, and the city's climate strategy is now guided by adopted plans and professional full-time staff. So to talk a bit more about the city climate and sustainability team's work, effective and inclusive community engagement is essential to the climate team's work. As our climate goals reach across a broad spectrum of sustainability issues, our engagement needs to include a wide variety of local experts and engaged citizens. For example, the city's electrification specialist, Devin Filikichia, has spoken with council about his development of Missoula's electric vehicle infrastructure plan, pardon me. Devin and I and a partner from Yellowstone-Teton Clean Cities participated in a national renewable energy laboratory peer learning cohort to learn about the best ways to engage with our community in developing that infrastructure plan. Devin is currently developing an advisory council made up of local electric vehicle experts as well as citizens interested in this specific topic as part of that work, as well as planning a thoughtful and thorough public engagement strategy. Lee Raderman, the city's climate and sustainability specialist focusing on the city's zero-waste goal and climate resilience, is planning two task forces. A food waste awareness task force to help design and implement a food waste awareness campaign that will include partners such as local food nonprofits and citizens engaged in food security issues, and with Home Resource, a deconstruction task force to create an incentive program for deconstruction. This task force will rely on a variety of expertise such as local deconstruction professionals, financial institutions, and more. At the appropriate time in the evolution of the Green Power Program, the city's renewable energy specialist, Evora Glenn, anticipates conducting public engagement to help publicize the Green Power Program to residents and businesses, and this engagement could be supported by a task force. Thus, the climate team is either already doing targeted community engagement or will do so in the future regardless of the resolution before you today. Given the climate team's desire to engage with the community as effectively as possible, we were really pleased when the local policy lab reached out to Lee Raderman to explore the possibility of working with the city's climate team to strategically and substantively involve residents in climate policy. As I noted last month, the lab is working with the city's climate team at no cost to establish a new framework for citizen support on our climate work. Here's a little bit about the local policy lab from their website. "The lab supports local governments in effectively engaging residents, especially those who are underrepresented, to strengthen democracy and address climate change. The lab envisions a just, equitable society where local governments partner with their residents to make transformational change. Membership of each climate task force in Missoula would vary depending on the project or issue at hand, and task force groups would have a short-term defined timeline with specific end goals and deliverables. At this point in time, we don't have extensive details of what the task force model will look like. The climate team is relying on the experts at the local policy lab to lead us in the development of that model. It seems logical to be able to develop the details of the task force model in a fully transparent way, hence bringing this resolution to you now. The climate team anticipates receiving results from the local policy lab in November and reporting back to council in December on how the climate team will implement those results. Local policy lab staff plan to come to Missoula in November when their recommendations are complete, and they'd be willing to meet with interested council members at that time. As requested by council member Campbell, the city's climate team will also come back to council quarterly to report on our engagement efforts and the task force methodology. So in conclusion, effective, inclusive community engagement is a bedrock of the work of the city's climate team, and we seek to improve our methods with guidance from the local policy lab. Disbanding the ECT will give the city staff more time to engage effectively. The ECT is currently redundant to the city's full-time staff, and in fact takes staff time away from city staff pursuing targeted climate work in which city staff members are the experts. The city's climate team will be creating task forces in the future regardless of whether or not the ECT is disbanded, and we respectfully ask council to help give us more time to do that work. We sincerely thank ECT members for their service over the past 20-plus years, and we sincerely thank council members for their consideration of this resolution. Thank you."
Okay, thank you, Ms. Geiger, and my apologies to council. I meant to start with Chair of the CCP Committee, which is Chair Savage, to just provide a summary of this agenda item and the committee reports to date. So I'll do that now, and I'm happy to provide any context as well.
Yeah, just briefly, I think that we all are aware that the mayor's office undertook looking at all of the boards and commissions that the city currently has to sort of understand staff time, what kind of needs and, you know, sort of deliverables that those boards and commissions were bringing forward. So this looking at the Energy and Climate Team wasn't specific. It was something that the mayor's office was doing across the board. And, you know, it came to light that there's a lot of staff time that goes into this particular board, and that also that it is redundant and that those, the work has deepened, very much deepened over the years, and that we have staff that is doing the work that this committee was sort of set out to do 20 years ago. It's been a very long time. Disbanding this committee does not mean that the city is abandoning climate work by any stretch. It actually means that it's freeing up our dedicated climate staff to be able to do more work in this realm because we do see it as so important. It's one of the city's lenses that we look, you know, make every decision through. So I just frame it that way. I really appreciate Ann you coming back and bringing answers and talking a little bit more about the task force model because I know that was some, that those were some of the questions that people had. So that's, that's all I have, but I'm happy to make the motion whenever.
Excellent. Thank you. I think what I'll do is, I'll just, before I have the motion on the floor, we'll go to questions from council, then we hear the motion, and we'll bring it back to parliamentary debate. I'll add to this, to the, I wasn't able to attend your committee meeting, and so just wanted to also reiterate my appreciation for the whole process. You've heard me speak to the executive order across all boards and commissions to take a look. More or less, you know, best practices, taking a look at boards and commissions over time is really necessary for the city as we take on more work and we grow. We need to evaluate the to evaluate the commissions that are in place. And as stated, this Energy and Climate Team members who have been basically, the way it's written, it's a technical advisory team related to the Municipal Conservation and Climate Action Plan for City Council prior to there being any staff members for, for the city. And so I am really grateful and proud and pleased with the work that this Energy and Conservation Team has helped do in terms of establishing the path for professional staff and of course, all of the city adopted plans that set forth the work that, that we do as a city in terms of our climate work and accountability to City Council and the, and the public. This is, one of the tasks that I have as an executive is certainly taking a look at the workload of the organization and seeing how we can do things, how we can innovate and how we can do things differently to achieve our goals in ways that help streamline some processes and take a look at our existing practices. And I did ask staff to evaluate boards and commissions. And because of the reasons that have been set out before you, this is the recommendation that we bring forward today. But again, I also want to express my gratitude for the time and energy of the Energy and Climate Team members and looking forward to how this engagement will go going forward with the task force approach on different specific areas, moving the city's climate goals forward. So with that, I'll move it to questions if that's okay. Counselor Savage first, and then we'll hear a motion. Okay, great. So Counselor Carlino.
Thanks. I've got just two questions. I do question the redundancy. City staff and citizen technical advisory boards are not the same thing. City staff have to, you know, balance competing interests and can't simply follow climate science. Citizen technically, technical advisory boards, they could simply follow climate science and advise that we follow climate science. They've, staff and the citizen advisory boards don't come to the same conclusions. They don't have the same proposals. I frankly think that they're not redundant at all, and I think there's a room for both of them. So I guess, I'm just wondering if somebody could explain the redundancy and how city staff and a citizen technical advisory board are the exact same thing.
We are also joined by two other staff members here this evening. Montana James is here with the Community Planning Development and Innovation Staff. And so, Ms. James, if you are on, which I would see if you're actually available here, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So I think, and Ann can jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the redundancy that we're talking about is really just the, the authority and the bylaws for the Energy and Climate Team. Really, the tasks that they are given are the same tasks that our staff and community partners and the proposed advisory boards would be taking on. So I don't think we would say that, that resident experts, a group of resident experts are the exact same as staff, but we feel confident that with the combination of our now larger professional staff, the task force model, and our community partners that are doing this work, that, that we can achieve all of this work effectively. And we, we hope to continue to engage folks who have been on the Energy and Climate Team in the task force model. We have a few folks who are members of the Energy and Climate Team that are now on the city's strategic implementation team as well. So we have, just have so many groups that are really tackling and digging in on the work that it just has felt like this appointed Energy and Climate Team group is not getting into the same depth that these other bodies are doing.
Thank you very much. Was that a satisfactory answer, Counselor Carlino?
Yeah. And I just had a second question.
Sure.
That was just one, so we've heard from members of the current Energy and Climate Team that they have expressed that they do not want to disband the team and that they're advising the city council as, you know, members of the Energy and Climate Team, citizen advisory technical team to not disband the team. How are we considering the current members' advice to us when they're, the technical advisory board members are, are telling us that it would be better for the climate to not disband the team and perhaps just, you know, still create these task force but have citizen advisory team, task forces for certain issues, and city staff all working on climate? So I guess my question is just how are we considering those members' opinions that ask us to not disband their team?
Sure, yeah. So as, as part of this process of reviewing all of the Community Planning Development and Innovation boards and commissions, we did do some in-depth interviews, conversations with an intern working with Central Services with every member of the Energy and Climate Team. So every member, every current member of the Energy and Climate Team was invited to do an interview, as well as some prior members and some of our community partners. And so it is true, and I, I don't think I've seen all of it. I know council has heard from a few current members that they would like to continue the Energy and Climate Team in the form it is now. But I wouldn't say that that was the consensus of all of the parties interviewed through the process. We saw quite a bit of variance in the responses about the charge of the Energy and Climate Team, participation projects, and, and whether it should continue in its existing form. And I think I sent a summary of that to council after the committee meeting, but I can send that again as well if it's helpful.
Thank you, Montana. All right, Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. I am wondering, is this effective immediately or will they, will the folks be able to finish their terms who are currently on the committee?
Ms. Trimble, would you answer that question, please? I'm looking actually, and I...
We were, we were actually just discussing that today. It is our understanding that it would be effective immediately because most of our boards and commissions have staggered terms. It wouldn't make sense to continue them out. You would end up with just a couple people and no forum. And so it would be a cleaner route to have it effective immediately.
One more question, please?
Sure.
Actually, I have two questions, if that's all right. I think they're pretty quick. I apologize. Ms. James, can you tell us, like, just straight up, how many people you interviewed who are either currently on or previously on the board said, "disband this"?
Sure, yeah. I don't have a, like, a number count in that sense. The intern that did the interviews for us provided summary themes. It's, it's not a huge number, right? So they were trying to give us the high-level themes while preserving relative anonymity in the responses. So they didn't give us a breakdown of, you know, X number said this to this question, X number said this to that question. It was more of a conversation.
Yeah, I, I think that's unfortunate. I would like to see those numbers because they are currently our experts. My last question is, is because climate, the climate collapse and climate crisis is such a pressing issue, as we've seen from the weather we've had this summer, regardless of where you think climate change is coming from, how do we prevent city staff from not becoming politically motivated based on who is elected mayor and council? I guess what I'm getting at is having a separate climate council is just that. It's separate, and they are able to act more independently. And, and have there been any conversations about how we can ensure that this board is working within best practices regardless of what the elected body says?
I'm wondering if that's a question for Ms. Geiger, especially with the labs. But, but Montana, I just saw that you unmuted as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would say a few things. You know, the, the members of the Energy and Climate Team are appointed by City Council. In terms of staff and political leanings, I guess, all city staff below the director level are, are hired professionals. And I would say in our department, we take that role very seriously. So I would hope and believe that our ethics policy and our other guidelines that all staff abide by would ensure that we're all acting ethically and, and doing our very best to serve the public regardless of political leanings.
And, I mean, the other thing that, this is Mayor Davis, the other thing that I will mention is that the city has adopted climate goals. The city has three lenses by which it considers decision-making that is climate, housing, and equity. And this is not an independent body by which it directs the work of staff. And so to clarify, the, this Energy and Climate Team is not nor should it direct the work of staff in that sense. And so as far as an independent body ensuring that the political preferences of climate science is ratified or that it is assured to be the workings of the city, that is the work of the administration and quite frankly, the members of the public electing the mayor and city council to ensure that this work continues. Ms. Cheryl?
Actually, I, I think my questions have been answered.
Okay.
I have comments, but I'll wait.
Okay, okay, great. And Counselor Becerra?
Thank you. I guess a couple of questions. From the information that we received, it looks like a total of 11 interviews were conducted. I'm curious as to when were those conducted? Like, how long ago?
Yeah, I, I think Lee Raderman is on. I know she worked with Eric Holstrom and the intern there. Eric is also on, so maybe he can speak a little bit to that. He was directly supervising the intern that supported that work.
Yeah, Eric Holstrom, Central Services, City's Chief Operations Officer. And our staff that supported the interview process worked on that last spring, so that was sort of the end of the last semester. So they're relatively recent.
Okay, and follow-up, please? So since last spring, did you consider any other alternatives to dismantling this board?
Who would like to answer that question? I would...
Staff or anyone who, you know, after, after you compiled all the information, which, you know, it says you're the majority of the team members, to me, that's more than half, said that they did not want to dismantle this team, were there any alternatives explored such as meeting less frequently or less staff hours, refocusing the group? Was anything else explored?
Sure, I can, I can, go ahead, Mayor.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead, Montana.
From, from the CPDI department level, we took, we did sort of an overall analysis of all of our appointed boards and commissions and put that into one report. That was shared with our department leadership team. We had a discussion about the recommendations at that point. And then we also shared it with the mayor's office from there. And so I think in those discussions, we, we talked about other possibilities. We consulted with the clerk's office, and ultimately, we, we came to the recommendations we did and hoping to, to balance all of the different needs and requirements that we have across all of those boards and commissions that we staff. The, this is one of those recommendations for the Energy and Climate Team. We're also implementing another set of recommendations around our At-Risk Housing Coalition to shift the administrative burden of that group as well. So it was a bit of a, a kind of combination of those different leadership team conversations about what possibilities we might explore.
Follow-up?
Sure.
Were interviews conducted for other boards and commissions, and do you arrive at similar conclusions?
Yeah, we, for the majority of our other boards and commissions, they are required in state law or city ordinance. So we did not do interviews for those because we understood in our review and assessment that we didn't have much latitude or decision-making space for how those are structured. The At-Risk Housing Coalition is that other one that we did have a little bit of wiggle room in, and it's a very large group. So we did a conversation at one of their general meetings and then a broader survey to collect feedback from that group, since individual interviews were not feasible.
Okay, and last question. How do you envision the process for city council involvement with, as you create task forces? How will, how are we going to learn about them and who's going to participate on what topics?
Ann, cover that one on the local policy lab side.
Let's see, I think this is on.
Yep.
I think in terms of the local policy lab's process, they will be coming here in November. So we, as I mentioned, we definitely invite interested council members to speak with them when they are here. And then we will come back and report quarterly. We do also, as a climate team, meet monthly with Board Chair Cheryl and with Committee Chair Savage and sort of keep them apprised of our work. And we can talk about other options with them as well. If you have any suggestions, please let us know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Absolutely. But Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. So just to, to re-clarify, so this, this committee was created by city council before we had any city staff working in this area.
That is correct, yes.
Can somebody tell me the last thing that this committee advised council on? Because I, and I'm not trying to be facetious, I have no idea the last thing that this committee advised council on.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to the past two chairs of this committee to possibly answer that question.
There's nothing that I've seen in my tenure on council that, that council has requested or kind of advised, been, been advised from them.
I advised council on nothing that I, that I can think of. One thing that they did do is they reviewed, they did a review of all the bills at the legislature and advised, took positions that they suggested we take on those. But we do also have an internal person that's doing that. So that, that's being done as well, the review of all the bills. So they did that, but we also have that within the city. And I don't know if you want to speak to how we're monitoring legislative bills and how we're taking positions on those as they relate to climate change. I mean, I don't, I don't know if someone wants to do that, but we, we do that as a city. But they didn't do that. They, they never brought it, they, they talked about it within that team, but they never brought it to council specifically.
And I guess my follow-up, Mayor or anybody on staff, I suppose, would be generally, and you know what, council, we've disagreed once or twice with the mayor on stances of the legislature. But generally, as it relates to these city stances, staff evaluates bills. We have a lobbyist. We, we get some, we can get any outside advice we want, and then the mayor takes a position. And if council wants to take a contrary position, we could. But nothing about this change stops the climate team from weighing in on climate bills.
Not at all. In fact, today, we reviewed in our senior leadership team, the plan moving forward. As you all know, we have, we retain a lobbyist for our municipality on a number of different issues. And as we look forward to what we may be thinking of for proactive legislation versus also monitoring what legislation might be coming down the pike that we would need to weigh in on, one of the conversations that we had had was whether any of our department heads were familiar at this date with anything related to climate-related challenges, especially as work municipalities are, you know, permitted to, for example, have, have engagement with. We will be asking our lobbyists to make sure that they monitor this because this is one of our core areas of, of concern and strategy.
Thanks. And I assume if someone who works at, say, the Montana Climate Office on campus has thoughts about a city initiative, you're open to hearing those.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, you bet, you bet. Councilor Carlino, do you have another question? Okay.
I'd like to answer that question, and then also I have one more question myself.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess one recent policy that the, you know, Energy and Climate Team was, was going to weigh in on was the code reform, which is arguably the biggest climate policy that we, any of us have. And they were basically kind of told not to do that because of this study. And again, our lobbyist has, is weighing competing interests. They're not following climate science with every policy that they're pushing for. They're weighing that with local control or with other things that are not following climate science. And that's why we need a climate focused citizen advisory board instead. And then my question was, prior to the study results, were other boards and commissions told to not have anybody apply and cancel all interviews? And what other boards and commissions are being asked to disband? Or was that just this board?
I will say, just as a point of order, the ECT was told that they could write a letter on code reform. They weren't stopped from doing that. And I may defer to Montana for the second question.
Yep, I, so and within our department, the other group that we're adjusting our administrative staffing to is that At Risk Housing Coalition. And that I will leave it to Eric, his hands up, about the broader work across the city with boards and commissions.
Yeah, good evening again, Eric Holstrom from Central Services. And just sort of speaking at a slightly more global perspective, there are a few, we've chosen not to try to implement this in a all at once approach. And so we've been sort of addressing these different boards and commissions as staff and capacity have permitted. The other, outside of the CPDI realm, the other place where we've been having conversation about what the current structure looks like is the Public Art Commission. And we've had some conversation with their leadership about board memberships, sort of recognizing that it is sort of an active state of review. It is possible that within other departments that are leading their own review, so I don't want to speak necessarily to detail that Public Works or any of our public safety departments might be engaging in with their departments and commissions, but the work is actively moving forward throughout, throughout the city in many departments. And I expect you'll have further conversations about other boards and commissions. Again, they're not all structured similarly, so you may have different engagement with, say, an advisory board versus a board with administrative powers.
So I'd like to reiterate that as their, so the Public Art Committee also, and Councilor Basika can speak to this as well, that as the council person assigned to that committee, we have also not continued to reappoint. And as we take a look at the way in which that committee is administratively supported by, by the city and how that interplays, that committee has a different set of governing factors due to the fact that we have a 1% for art ordinance. So there are some different factors to consider when we take a look at the way that that committee is structured. And so I see Councilor Jordan's hand up, and then I'll move to you, Councilor Savage, if that's all right.
Thank you. I think my question is kind of answered, but I think I just need a little bit more clarification. You know, looking at things like the cemetery board, it doesn't look like, I don't feel like I've heard any, I don't think I've heard anything about it being disbanded. And I'm curious how we've kind of prioritized which ones we're disbanding and which ones we are not. I'm not trying to say I have an opinion about the cemetery board at all, but just wondering as far as how we, how we, I know you've talked about redundancy and staff time and whatnot, but what about the other boards? Like, I look at the cemetery board and it seems like it's probably important, but I don't really understand how it fits into the whole scheme of things and why some boards were chosen over others. And again, I know you've explained some of this, but I, I'm still kind of confused about how the hierarchy of, or the decision was made to disband some and keep others.
Sure, I can, I can speak to how the Office of Community Planning, Development, and Innovation approached it. And so again, it's really driven by the boards and commissions that our department is responsible for. All of our, I believe, all of our appointed boards and commissions, and Eric can correct me, they have to be staffed administratively and programmatically by some department. And so ours are largely land use related, but then you add in things like houselessness, our climate and sustainability programs, and some of our other functions. So that is really, you know, our analysis and report only included the CPDI boards and commissions. And so I, I know that this is, we're, we're bringing these recommendations forward as a department at this time. And I think as Eric mentioned, you likely will see more recommendations and summary reports from other departments as they work through the executive order process.
That is correct. The other thing that I would add to that is that there's, through not only the evaluation process, and I think we can hear from other council members, that have been the council representatives on this committee. So the, just to reiterate, as part of the evaluation process, the intern that conducted the interviews with existing ECT members, city council members, as well as climate community stakeholders in the climate field, their interviewees reported that the committee has struggled to identify a consistent scope of work and purpose and has had trouble landing on a work plan that is effectively implements tasks according to their bylaws. That is not the case with somebody like the cemetery board, for example. So that is part of the, just part of the evaluation. And as Ms. James identified, we will be taking a look at other, other boards and commissions as the, as the workload arises, as terms are coming up and needing to be reappointed. All these are part of the consideration. Councilor Savage?
Yeah, thank you. Just to piggyback on that just a bit, I, I did not obviously conduct the interviews. I was interviewed. But I did have several conversations with members of the ECT, like personal conversations with them. And that is exactly what they said to me, is that the board felt directionless and that they did, they wanted to be of use to the city. And one person said, if you, if there can't, if there isn't a clear scope of work and it isn't something that we feel like we really want, that the city can really benefit from all of the expertise in a clear and direct way, like with a work plan, that they would prefer it be disbanded. And I heard that from several of the members of, of the committee. So, I mean, I just say that as a point of clarity. I see you shaking your head, Mr. Carlino, but I personally did have those conversations. And I think that you're questioning that, and that's actually pretty, like, not okay. So there were a couple other things I actually wanted to say to clarify a couple things that you had mentioned. So we asked, we did cancel interviews, and that was in an interest to not waste people's time because this process was going on and we knew that. And it felt disingenuous to not tell people that this was a, this was under consideration and that we may not continue this board. And so we didn't want people to be appointed under false expectations and then two months later be told this committee is no longer existing. So that was the reason for that. And then for the code reform piece, you know, the committee did express an interest in weighing in on code reform after your suggestion, Mr. Carlino. And so I did say to them, you can weigh in and write a letter, and I think that's how it landed. But I did caution them that this was a process that had been going on for more than two years and that if they wanted to weigh in at this point, that there were many experts that had already been consulted, there had been so many interviews, so much engagement, this work was already pretty deep, and that they're welcome to comment on it, but it's also a little late in the game for this committee to engage in that work. So I just wanted to say all of that as points of clarity.
Mr. Holstrom, you have your hand up. Did you have another point before I move on to Councilor Farmer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just add something I think that goes to Councilperson Jordan's question. And first of all, I wanted to say thank you for both reminding me to, to check and then share back with you all that the mayor's executive order specifically requests a report in January. So you'll have an opportunity to get kind of an overview of the city's efforts in this regard over the course of the year. And so there should be an opportunity to sort of engage with that report when we provide that. And then I also just wanted to emphasize that the goal of this project is not necessarily to find boards and commissions that we want to eliminate. We are looking at consolidation options. And some of this was sort of born of legislation that has created the necessity to provide some consolidation in our land use space, governance space. And we have seen some other cities who took advantage of the opportunity to consolidate their, the scope of their boards and commissions to maximize the, the value of the volunteer time and the staff time that is dedicated to those. So I just wanted to, you know, add that part of the goal will also be to find, you know, maybe synergies where we can complete the work that maybe a board does in a very narrow way. It would be complementary to the work that another board does, and it would make sense to have one, one cohort of volunteers be responsible for that. So that is sort of the broader thinking, and we should have some, some more concrete detail for you in January.
Great, thank you for that. Councilor Farmer?
Thanks, I'll be quick. I, I think you said this already, I just wanted to clarify though, that, so when the board was formed, we had zero FTE dedicated to our climate initiatives. And today we have three, correct? And do you know, at the point that the board was formed, is the three FTE a result of some of their suggestions or recommendations? I mean, did we create those positions because they suggested it? Or do we know how we arrived there at three FTE?
It's my understanding that the ECT was very important in terms of actually hiring on at least the initial climate staff that was far before my time. So if there's anyone else who has more information, that's helpful. At least for the last position that we've hired, that was sort of an internal effort, our electrification specialist. But Montana or Lee Raderman might want to weigh in more.
The climate and conservation plan of, I think, 2012 that, that established the committee did, one of the recommendations was for the city to hire professional staff. It didn't specify how many staff. And, and I would say, over the last few years, our, our staff additions have largely been through the support of city council or through finding opportunities for grant funding to support particular efforts that could, could also support staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, you bet. All right, we'll take one more question, then we're going to move on to making the motion and hearing public comment. So Councilor Jordan?
Oops. Yeah, thank you for that. I know that I've already had a chance to speak. I just, when Ms. Savage was speaking, it made me think of something I hadn't thought of before. I was just looking through my emails to see if I, if there was an invitation to participate in the interviews with existing and past board members to find out where they're, where they were at with this. And I didn't see one, and I'm just wondering if I missed that or if the invitation to speak with these folks was passed out to everyone or just certain people? And if it was just certain people, how those folks were chosen? Because I would have really liked to have participated, and if I missed it, my bad. But if it was kind of a selective process, I kind of want to know more about that and how to be a part of that process in the future.
Thank you for that question. And, oh yeah, Montana, please go right ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the interviewees for the process were, like I mentioned, current and former Energy and Climate Team members, and then the city council folks that are representatives to the Energy and Climate Team. So Councilors Carlino and Savage.
Thank you for that. I will ask that we hear for the motion on the floor, and then we can hear public comment, and we can come back to parliamentary debate after.
All right. I will read the recommended motion to adopt a resolution, amending Resolution 7753, no longer requiring an appointed technical advisory team related to the municipal conservation and climate action plan, thereby disbanding the standing volunteer Energy and Climate Team in favor of a task force based engagement approach.
All right, great, thank you very much. Motion is on the floor. This opens up the public hearing, and we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Are there members of the public that wish to comment on this item this evening? Not seeing any in the room? Thanks for sticking with us. How about online? Not seeing any online, then that wraps up the public comment phase. We'll come back to then parliamentary debate on this item. And are there council members that wish to speak? Councilor Jordan, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think this is one of those things, I think climate collapse is something that we should really focus a lot of attention on. And I am disappointed to see this being disbanded, and I recognize that it's been a, a time sink for staff and, and feels redundant. But I also think that for climate collapse, we're all feeling the effects of it, and the more voices we have, the better. And in my experience of failing boards or boards that perhaps have scope creep or lack of focus, it takes a, it just takes a gear shift rather than a disband. And I would have rather seen a gear shift on this particular issue because things are changing at a rapid pace. And I would like to, I would like to, to see many voices on this. I would like to see us moving more, doing more, being more experimental. And I think that it would have been great to have taken some time to redirect this board or have a, a broader discussion on the council floor before the decision was made to disband this, because I think that there's a lot of, we're missing an opportunity and we're, we're letting a really critical issue and voices that need to be heard slip through our fingers. And I definitely will not be voting for this. I would have seen, I would have rather seen a reformation of the, of the, of the board rather than a disband.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Jordan. Councilor Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I, I first really want to thank everyone that over the years has, has served on this committee. I, I say that every time we do interviews, and I, I'm endlessly thankful for people's willingness to volunteer for the city for issues that they care about. I do want to say that I appreciate the, the mayor's approach to reviewing all these committees across the city. The city has grown quite a bit in the, the tenure that we've had these different committees and commissions formed, and our needs have changed. So I, I think that staff capacity matters. And if you, if you take it across the city and you take it across departments, we were just talking earlier today about, you know, minute taking and how much time that takes across all these committees, across all the things that we do. So it's not something we think about, and, and it seems small at the time, but you add it up and it's a lot. For this, for this specific committee, I'm happy to hear about the engagement of the Climate Lab. I, I do want to be, Anne, I do, count me in on that list. I want to, I would love to meet with them when, when they're here. And looking at finding ways to, to pull them in as experts on issue base, on the, per issue, I guess, as a task force. I think that's actually, to me, and to, to use my colleague's language, that is a bit of a gear shift. And I think that that is really good because this committee absolutely has, has a lot of expertise that we can utilize. As many of you know, I've worked much of my life in conservation, and I fully understand the critical nature of this point in time. Having chaired Climate Parks and Conservation Committee during my first four years in office, which, which has a climate team under it, I also understand how the city has progressed over the decades since this team was formed and that, you know, put simply, how the needs of the city have changed. Since the team was enacted decades ago, Climate Smart Missoula has formed and become an important partner with the city, and we have added now a growing climate department. I personally championed the expansion of that department and have worked to move forward their agendas, including the green pla- their agendas, including the Green Power Program with Northwestern Energy, the Inflation Reduction Act work, as well as the electrification position we added last year. And as Anne mentioned, I also participate in the monthly meetings with the climate staff. I know that this work is important, and I understand that it is currently understaffed. We're still working on that. We're always working on it. There are a few reasons I plan to support these recommendations. Number one, staff is one of the most expensive things that we fund with tax money. We all talk about the importance of reducing taxes. To me, if an understaffed department is being asked to take time away from grant writing and other work to staff a committee, then it makes sense to rethink this allocation of time. For this one committee, the amount of time is not exorbitant, but over the numerous committees we have across the city, it can be. Having participated in this committee, I also think the work and input would be very valuable in the task force format, so I'm kind of thrilled that that came out of this. I want to recognize, because we talk about climate work is this scope of work, and it is, but volunteer committee work is very different than staff work. It's not the same level of time or accountability, so the work itself is not interchangeable. I think that's really important. You can't just put a volunteer in to do a staff's work. I want to support the mayor and her efforts to increase efficiencies in the city, and appreciate the process she went through in the assessment of these boards and commissions. I'm not sure that this has ever been done, this full assessment of committees, although it has been talked about. So I applaud you for taking this step. I'm very thankful again for the members of the committees and recognize their expertise in this matter. I think the task force format's going to work great. I will be interested as we, as we kind of get, as we finish our assessment, I guess, of all the committees, and maybe others will go into a task force format. I would be really interested to hear what I think Ms. Becerra was alluding to this or asking about it earlier. It's getting late, so I'm getting tired. But to know how, what those tasks are going to be, I think it would be, I would love for the climate team to bring to council at least letting, not that we need to vote on what those tasks are, but how, the different projects that you plan on kind of bringing them in for us. So I guess that's all I have to say. I absolutely understand the critical nature of where we are, but I think we need to be really strategic with the work of this department, because we don't have enough staff in this department, and so we need every second that they have.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl, for your comments. Counselor Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Mayor. And I want to thank your work and staff's work for bringing this resolution forward. It seems to me, just listening to some of the back and forth tonight, that perhaps this team's a little bit a victim of its own success if this motion passes with the idea that we're going to add staff in the future to address this issue. And we've reached that point with three FTEs, and I think having those folks in place, and as colleague Ms. Cheryl just mentioned, you know, the expense that goes into having staff on hand for this purpose is an important consideration. And so we've arrived at that point, and I think there's an opportunity for us to move forward and to eliminate at this point what we no longer need. To be clear, just bottom line for me, any chance we have to reduce bureaucracy and redundancy in local government, I'm for that. And I think this is one of those situations where we can consolidate the needs for climate action with putting together a team with the staff that we have now to work on that. I think they made it clear, abundantly clear, that they're essentially having an open door policy, not only for other staff, not only for members of council, but for our technical experts that are out there in the community that might have been part of this climate team at one point or another, to still come forward and give meaningful input to the folks within the team. I would say too, I appreciate staff's willingness to come forward and give quarterly updates to council for work as it proceeds forward. I think that's important. I think it shows transparency. I think it shows the opportunity for council to have accountability, so accountability will be maintained. I think I have a chance for public input, certainly allow for media coverage or anything that might come forward from the climate team. So I think there's enough sunlight out there still within this entire framework for this to work. And going forward, yeah, I hope we can look at other advisory committees and teams and look for savings in our reduction bureaucracy and consolidation within other departments, teams and boards going forward. So hopefully, you know, that's work that we could continue on doing, that's something we could get to through the course of this year, and work to better the services committee and saving taxpayer dollars at the same time. So I'll be in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. And Counselor Becerra?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I appreciate staff's trying to look for efficiencies and your position and your directive to look for efficiencies and use our staff time as sufficiently as possible. And it's not often that I disagree with that, but this time I do. And I think it's in part because I find it somewhat ironic and sad that a committee that advocated so passionately to create a department that staffed a, an important issue such as climate change, and was successful at getting that staff integrated into our departments, that now that we have grown that staff capacity, we can't find two hours every month to staff that committee. So, you know, I think that if you look at the results from the interviews, I think all of them express some issue with the direction they're going or lack of direction. And I do think that that is in part a collaboration with staff. It's having the directive from staff and that collaboration so that, you know, they can have a central goal and help staff achieve the goals that we have in our strategic plan versus becoming a burden to staff. So, you know, I think that we, I spoke to a couple of them just last week, and I think they felt like they want to continue to contribute to the city. You know, we look at the successes of that team, and I think the fact that we have a department that deals with the challenging issues of climate change is proof of that. Whether they have been successful at giving us advice or recommendations to city council, I have to say that sometimes the role and responsibilities of those committees is beyond, and so much more than just giving us advice, but it's a connection to the community on important issues, especially this issue that we're seeing the effects of it even today with how smoky it is. So, you know, there are things that have gotten accomplished because of that team that we now take for granted. They, I remember being staffed to the city a very, very long time ago, when looking for how to be more energy efficient in our operations was one of the things that they were looking at. So I feel like they're, they want to continue to contribute, and I think that we owe it to the successes of that department, who at the very least look at ways in which they can do that differently. And I think that getting around a common goal and objective, retooling, if you will, that department, that team, seems fair to me and seems like a good way to continue to have that connection with the community and local experts on an issue that we are going to continue to have to manage and find solutions for. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting disbanding the team.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Becerra. And Counselor Carlino?
Thanks. I think the Energy and Climate Team members that came last, came at the committee about this to speak in favor of keeping their team did a great job, and I think Councilwoman Becerra did a great job of explaining why we should keep the team, and I will just take a crack at trying to explain as well from my perspective. Again, city staff plays a different role than a citizen advisory group. City staff has many different competing interests and cannot simply follow climate science, leaving the administration and city council often making decisions that do not match up with climate science and are actually sacrificing our future in favor of competing interests. For example, I guess I won't name too many, but just to name a few of where we aren't following climate science is, you know, when we're voting for car-centric designs of roads, when we're voting to not allow any construction in town without having mandated parking spots built. That's not, that's not following climate science. And perhaps it would be good to have a citizen advisory group to point that out, or maybe not voting for the sustainable building incentive program three years in a row when we've had, you know, when we're just taking closer and closer over climate edge. Frankly, I think we need a citizen advisory group to be able to point out things that as a council and city staff, we aren't able to, because we've got competing interests and we're trying to make everybody in town happy. But what climate science demands is so far from where we are right now, and frankly, we can't make everybody happy and follow climate science. We need a group that, of citizens to just tell us exactly what to do for climate science, and to take that away is a huge mistake. The Energy and Climate Team members have advocated to us at that meeting and in emails to not disband the team, perhaps we could just reform it in a different way. But to wake up this morning, if everybody in Missoula and over the weekend just having to breathe in the wildfire smoke that is being caused and exacerbated by climate, by the climate crisis, we're seeing natural disasters at unprecedented rates and more intense because of the climate crisis, and because of decisions that politicians are making to not do what's right to stop the climate crisis, I think it's imperative that we vote against this and vote to keep the team and have a citizen advisory group that can point out when we're following climate science and not. I think it's really important that we have that. City staff is really great to have and plays a key role, and I think we should hire more climate staff, but that is a different role than a citizen advisory group. So I guess in conclusion, I would, I motion that we table this until the Earth's climate is stabilized.
Okay, so a motion to table is on the floor. And so I, we currently have another motion that does not make an amendment, so I don't believe we take that currently, because we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Savage.
No, you, you can't motion to table until there's a motion on the floor, and the motion to table is non-debatable, so Mr. Carlino's made a motion to table, and I think that we just have to vote on it.
Oh yes, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
I actually think technically we take public comment, but there's no one here to publicly comment, I guess.
Right. Yeah. So the motion to table is on the floor, which means we have to take a vote on it before moving forward with the other motion. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. Counselor Nugent?
All right. So Ms. Trimble?
All right, we have a motion to table. We're going to begin the vote with the seeker.
No.
No.
Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Nugent?
No.
Savage?
No.
And Cheryl?
No.
All right, that motion fails with eight opposed and three in favor.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the parliamentary assistance there. Thank you. All right, so we come back then to motion and parliamentary debate, and we will now move on to Counselor Farmer, who has your hand raised?
Thanks, I'll be quick. I just wanted to also say I really appreciate the folks that have volunteered for the last 20 years on this committee. It's a huge commitment, and I know that it's, that we always get very high caliber folks on our committees. I think I do feel comfortable voting yes to disband this committee, because I think it's clear that as the city has made huge improvements, we have three full-time FTE dedicated to this effort. It's also one of our strategic goals that we look through. So I would venture to say that Missoula is leaps and bounds beyond many cities, especially Montana. So I don't think that voting to disband this committee is setting us back. I think that we are going to see improvements from the new task force. I wish that we had that in conjunction with disbanding the committee, so I hope that we can see some reports on that soon. So thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And Counselor Savage?
Well, I just wanted to just call attention to the fact that we will still have citizen engagement when it comes to climate issues. And I think that moving toward this task force model actually allows us to cast a wider net and to be able to have more engagement also from people who have served on this committee who do have like amazing expertise, but it also gives us the opportunity to reach out beyond that as well.
Thank you for your comments. And Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I appreciate everyone's comments, and I appreciate that the people who have volunteered on this don't want it to disband. I would venture to guess that almost any committee, if left up to the people in the committee alone, would not choose to disband. I think that there's a bigger conversation around that. I do think it's a little bit misleading, misleading is another word, I just, I don't think it's a fair comparison to say that disbanding this committee is somehow directly leading or indirectly leading to the smoke we see in the air today, because I think that part of everything we've talked about tonight is that Missoula as a city, as previous councils, have taken large steps to be a very proactive climate city by having a department, by participating in the ability to limit our carbon footprint and create alternative energy sources with Northwestern Energy and that Green Plan. I mean, I think that there are lots of things that the city is doing on that front. And I also think that, you know, we all talk about all these things we'd like to see the city do better, and then we all get into our little areas and we don't want to see things change. So I want to put out on the record that we can eliminate committees in the planning world, if you would like, any of them that aren't legally required. In fact, I'm all for. So hopefully, we can continue this conversation, because I do think that there is a time and place when all these committees start, but they don't necessarily have to last forever. And kind of by some of the, some of the thought process tonight, I think that any committee that's ever created by council would indeed last forever. And I don't, I don't think that that's the intent. I think that the idea behind task force really makes a lot of sense, and it shows me a commitment from you that the city is going to continue to rely on experts to advise us. But I also don't want necessarily people to serve on committees just for the sake of serving on a committee. And there's a lot of things that were pointed to in code reform and things like that, that the decisions that need to be made have to be made by this body. And there are a couple committees that I think different people have talked about that they should weigh in on council votes and things like that. And anybody's welcome to weigh in on a council vote, but at the end of the day, they don't get to tell council how to vote. And I think that, I think this task force route is a good way to go, and I believe firmly that if somehow the city of Missoula's commitment to climate slips, you will see the voters strongly say, nope, we want to keep doing this. So I don't think in any way that we are, we are changing our commitment at all. And Mayor Davis, I appreciate you willing to, your willingness to work with staff to look at some of these things and acknowledge that we can change, and change doesn't mean stepping back, change just means doing things differently.
That's right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent, I appreciate that. In summation, that's truly what it is. In not one of the city boards or commissions, and particularly those that are not mandated by law, do we have any sunset provision, any review position? And that is something that over time, when you add dozens and dozens of committees, you have to be able to take a look, just like any board or organization should. I would say that the decision on whether to have a board or commission isn't formed by client, climate science, but it is by organizational science, and it is by resource allocation. And again, And again, I just want to emphasize the commitment that I have as the mayor and the administration to the work that we are doing as professional staff and with these task forces, I'm hoping that we have the opportunity to have members of the community that have participated over the years, as far as this, as this Energy and Climate Committee as well as others, to be able to participate with these task forces and beyond. So I'm looking forward to adding some change and some fresh perspective on how we approach the community engagement on this work. So with that, Mr. Carlino, I have offered you plenty of opportunity to speak on this topic and I'm gonna go ahead and wrap it up with a council vote. So, we're gonna wrap up our parliamentary debate, we've heard council comments and questions and I'm gonna ask Ms. Trimble for a roll call vote, please.
All right, voting on item 9.1BB involving the resolution to dissolve the Climate and Energy Volunteer Team, getting back at the beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra?
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Becika?
Yes.
And that's eight in favor, three opposed.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Trimble, that wraps up that agenda item, thank you everybody for the robust discussion. We're now gonna move on to item 9.3A, which is the Budget FY25 Downtown Business Improvement District Tax Assessment. This is again under old business, as I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, this is a holdover from the budget process where we needed to have the final numbers from the Department of Revenue and then the associated calculations, so this could be an accurate number. So, Ms. Trimble, can I hand this to you for your, for presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very quick presentation, the Downtown Business Improvement District is an area of downtown mainly surrounding the Higgin Street corridor that is divided into two zones. The first zone is closest to that main corridor and there's a second zone that's a little bit further out. This is a special improvement district that is, was voted into existence by the actual property owners in that district many years ago and was actually last renewed, I believe, in 2020 for 10 years. So, the assessment that we bring forward today is based on the assessment that was agreed upon in, in 2020, it's a percentage, usually based on a percentage of the assessed value, which comes to us from the State Department of Revenue, which is why we have to wait until the bitter end of the budget season in order to put these numbers together. But there is a formula that can be found in the original resolution, it's also in the resolution that you'll pass today, that assigns different properties a different valuation. So, private and commercial properties are, and nonprofits are taxed at a certain rate that's a percentage of their valuation, like a flat fee in addition to the percentage assessment. City and county property are at a slightly different rate that is based on the square footage of the lots and parks land is evaluated at a slightly different rate as well and that's all found in the resolution. So we, then this money is used to improve the downtown business corridor through things like improved, increased garbage pickup and increased sweeping and increased snow plowing in the winter, things of that nature that bring people into our downtown and create a place that people can enjoy, residents and visitors like. So this is our last piece of the budget and we are voting on the resolution as it is found in your packet today.
All right, fantastic, thank you very much for that summary and I'll go ahead and now turn it over to see if there's any questions from council on this item. Not seeing any, not seeing any questions from council. We will turn it over for public comment, see if there's any public comment on this agenda item. Not seeing any in the room, is there any public comment online for this particular agenda item? Okay, not seeing any, then that will bring us back to council comments, one more round, see if there's any council comments. All right, thanks everybody and thanks for that review. Ms. Trimble, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
All right, voting on the Downtown Business Improvement District Tax Assessment, beginning with Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Bezika?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously with a love and in favor.
Okay, wonderful, thanks everybody. That wraps up our council business, we'll now move on to informational items and so for number 10, public comment on non-agenda items. Either members of the public wish to come up and speak, please come on up. We allow three minutes, please go ahead and say your name for the record and I'll go ahead and time you up here.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, is this on?
Yes, it is, thank you for asking, appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, my name is Jonathan Peebleson, P.E.E.B.L.S.O.N., I'm here on behalf of Decriminalize Nature, we are a nonprofit educational organization, we have worked with city council previously to open a discussion around the decriminalization of entheogenic plants and fungi. I am an herbalist, an advocate, an educator, I've been working in the field now for over 10 years, here in the city of Missoula, I've worked with hundreds of different clients or patients, as you might call them, and over a dozen organizations, so they have come together and implored me to speak on their behalf for us to re-initiate the conversation, I believe it was tabled last time during the conversation and public comment period. So, on behalf of a community and the community members and the organizations that are involved, we would like to see the city council resume conversation around that, resume the action towards a resolution. And if there's any questions about how that might look or what it looks like unfolding, there are 30 other cities in the United States who have already passed this resolution, about 15 of those have passed since we tabled the resolution. So just, at any point that you'd like to reach out with me, I've sent emails, there's open comment periods for our community, there's a public event on September 15th at Open Way, we'd welcome you to come and ask questions to community members. So, on the community's behalf, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peebleson and thank you very much for sticking around for public comment this evening on that. Any other public comment this evening? No? All right, how about online? Any members of the public wishing to make public comment this evening on items not on the agenda? All right, not seeing any, that wraps up our public comment on non-agenda items. Moving to communications from the mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and skip that this evening and so I'll move on to general comments of city council members and I will start here in the room with President Cheryl.
I'm gonna pass as well, thank you.
Okay, you bet, Counselor Becerra, pass, okay. Counselor Nelson?
I'm the only one, well, so far. Well, I just give a shout out to our mayor, to our fire chief, to staff at the city and also to our Montana Senator John Tester for securing a $7 million SAFER grant for the city to hire more firefighters. You know, we talk a lot about maintaining affordability in this room and this is the kind of supplemental grant that can help reduce the tax burden for some aspects of emergency services. So, yeah, just a shout out to everyone involved in securing that grant, we get more firefighters to match our growing city, so that's great.
Thank you so much for that, I really appreciate you recognizing that, that award that we just received at the end of last week, thank you very much, appreciate that. Counselor Savage?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Nugent?
I'll pass.
Okay. I'll also pass, thanks, Mayor.
All right, you bet, moving on over to Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I too will pass.
Okay, Bezika, and Counselor Carlino?
Yeah, I'll try to be really quick, I think it was a mistake to eliminate the climate, citizen-led climate advisory group, I do understand that organizational structure can always be better, but to completely disband the group, I think was a huge mistake. Frankly, this council and administration does not follow climate science with every decision, we vote for things that are car-centric designs, we vote to force parking mandates instead of, like, we vote for all sorts of things that are not following climate science and that's why we need a citizen advisory board to point that out and show us how to properly do that. And the fact that we just got rid of that, I think was disheartening. I think there's room to, you know, to still have citizens involved, of course, in better ways, but frankly, this administration and council don't follow climate science with every decision and we could be a lot better and, and to act like we're doing okay with an issue like this as it gets worse and worse and we're living through these natural disasters, species going extinct, all of our health at risk is, is pretty disheartening for future generations and for people living right now. It's never enough until we've stabilized the earth's climate and got us off of fossil fuels and I see this decision today as a big step backwards. I always thought that, you know, the reason we weren't taking proper, proper policy stances on climate as, as a country was just because all of our politicians were bought out by fossil fuel packs, CEOs and executives and I know that's not the case with the city council, it's something else. And I think we need to get to the bottom of it and actually just follow climate science because all these excuses and, and putting other things first is really just dooming the future generations and it's really disheartening to have to sit at these tables while we make decisions that are, that are putting us deeper into this hole.
Thank you, Counselor Carlino, are there members online, council, city council members online? Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, look, I, Daniel, thank you for your comments just there, I do believe there's more we can do and as a parent of a 19 and a 21-year-old who said thank you for handing us a poo sandwich as far as climate goes, they want to know what we're doing and why we're not doing absolutely everything we can do. And it's really hard to kind of effect really big change on city council because we're such a small body with limited decision-making capacity, but I also think we should be spending as much, as many resources as possible to address climate change locally, I should say climate collapse locally and try and impact the rest of the state because while we are the most progressive liberal town in, in the state, the bar is super low and I think it prevents us from really checking with ourselves. And I, I have a hard time having these conversations with my kids because they've been almost overeducated about what's going on and it's affecting my kids' mental health and so I would, I too would like to see us try and be more creative as it relates to climate collapse on council and thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor, I'm done, thank you.
You bet, thank you, Counselor Jordan, and Counselor Anderson, I'm just checking to make sure that you have an opportunity.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity and the discussion tonight and I appreciate the recognition that often we would love to do more and implement more, but our hands are tied and I don't think it has anything to do with us on council, but the sum of the regulations that were constrained by the both state and federal level and it's unfortunate, but I also understand that we have to balance all the needs, so appreciate all the thorough discussion and time that went into this. And I also want to echo what council member Nelson said in regards to Senator Tester advocating for the city of Missoula to get a SAFER grant. I think it's important to also thank the citizens of Missoula for voting for the levy, this SAFER grant along with the levy really gives us a much-needed boost in the arm. SAFER grant is for a very short period of time, but it will allow us to get firefighters on the ground as well as start putting money, getting apparatus and trucks and plans to build out the Station 6 in possibly a shorter timeline than what would have been possible without this SAFER grant. So a huge shout out to Senator Tester for advocating for us and for our first responders and, yeah, really thrilled about that. I actually was with the chiefs last week doing firefighter interviews to hire the 15 new firefighters that are going to be joining the Missoula Fire Department when Senator Tester called Chief Hughes to tell him the good news that we had gotten the grant. So that was a fun moment of synergy to be able to kind of be in that room when that happened as well as to meet the folks who are interested in serving our community as future Missoula firefighters. And I will say that they are a very impressive bunch of individuals and I think that we continue to be very lucky that people feel the call to public service, especially in a career in fire service and, you know, I, it was an honor to sit into, get to sit in on those interviews and I'm thrilled to see the folks who will continue to lead our department going forward and just thank everyone who's there currently for laying the foundation and we are, I think, in a good place, we can't be complacent because Missoula is continuing to grow and the needs are changing, but I just felt very thankful for our community last week for passing the levy and then for our senator advocating for us to really see the difference that we'll make in the fire department. So, those are my comments and everyone hope for rain.
Thank you very much, Counselor Anderson, and in fact, that is in the forecast, so by Thursday, we'll be wearing sweaters. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn our meeting at 10:08 PM, thank you very much, everybody. What's that? I know, totally. Oh man, you know, you think, you think that we're